9:03 on my call this board of supervisors made you the order. Mr. Bradford, you just walking in the room making your pass. Do you mind give us the invitation?
Yes, sir. Oh grace in heaven, Father, we thank you this morning, oh God, for allowing us to see another meeting. And Father, we just ask, oh God, that you continue to strengthen our leaders. Father, continue to give them knowledge from Ohio. Father, continue to bind them close together. Father, we continue to pray for our first responders, our nurses, our doctors. We pray for the city, this county, the state, and this country of God. Father, continue to bring us close together, God. And Father, we just ask, oh God, to continue to bless Adams County, oh God, for new businesses. Father, continue to open the doors, oh God, give us favor, oh God, across this state and in this country, oh God. And Father, we just ask these prayers in your first son's name, amen.
Let me turn for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every being and justice for all. All right, I'm gonna do a roll call. Mr. Rick Gray. Ms. Hudson. Mr. Gaines. Mr. Middleton. Paige Dean. Randy Lewis. Scott Slobber. And Stephen Washington.
Morning, morning.
And I'm here. Scott, apparently the rumors of your demise were untrue. Scott Slobber died. But apparently it wasn't this one.
He got about three or four.
I told everybody, I said, look, I'll let y'all know Monday. That's when I want to know. But I'm glad to see you here and you look healthy.
I got several texts asking you.
So do we got that?
How weird, what if you didn't answer them back? I need a motion to approve minutes, please. Moved by Ms. Hudson, second by Mr. Middleton, any discussion?
With the necessary corrections I really got with Ms. Dean.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor? Any nays? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the docket. Moved by Mr. Gaines. Second by Mr. Middleton, any discussion?
Mr. President, I just want to bring up this, what I've been bringing up for a while, about the jail over there. You know, I was complaining about the water bill over there. And it used to be almost $3,000. I forget what, it's $719, man.
So are inmates start flooding the building and?
I'm going on, it went from $3,000 to $700 and something dollars.
That's insane. I guess we should have expected that a little bit. I'm glad to hear. Okay, any more discussion? All in favor? Any nays? Motion approved. All right, approval of monthly financial reports for the Adams County Sheriff's Officer, Chancellor, Clerk, and Purchasing reporter. Need a motion. Moved by Mr. Gaines. Second by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion? All in favor? Any nays? Motion carries. Special presentations. Xanty Isaac, elected official scholarship. Is she here? County business. Johnny Burns. Is Johnny Burns here? All right, we'll move to Virginia Hallelu. Did you saw how that name was spelled on here?
I did not, but that's what.
It's Hallelu.
My cousin's.
Hallelu.
Thank y'all for letting me be here. I'll go to the replay. Also, I want to thank you, we got our preparation check from 2024. I'm here for spay neuter matches, we appreciate that greatly. And even in the next few days, you should be receiving our 2025 preparation letter request. I do come here annually to ask for help for spay neuter for people. It's basically a low back cost voucher program for people in Natchez, Adams County, to have their pets fixed at a reasonable cost. Our group is out to help pet overpopulation, which when I've come before, if you're an animal lover, you know why we want to do this. If you're not an animal lover, you still need us because we're going to get rid of all the cats. Well, we're going to try to help the cat situation because it doesn't take long to have a cat explosion. Puppies being born that don't need to be. Everybody fix their pets, we wouldn't have a problem here. I think last year, Mr. Gray talked about, he wasn't a cat person, but he had one that killed a snake in his carport. And now he knows it's important to spay neuter and possibly having a cat to protect your property. I had this, that I passed out, it's just a quick bullet, it's about who we are. We have been around since 2009. Hundred percent of voucher program, we started in Mississippi spay and neuter. And we're still going, this December, we make 15 years. We do fundraising, we apply for grants, I'll be back here probably in the next few weeks for your signature on a grant I apply for. Where it's the I care for animals, Car Tech Grant, y'all apply. And we're approved, we've been approved every year, we've received over $18,000 so far. That we help people get their pets fixed, then we, y'all hold the money, and then we send you invoices, and then you reimburse us. We recently been getting the same grant approved through the city as well. We are a hundred percent volunteer based, there are, the expenses for our group are very limited. We have two checks we write every month are to the vets, Dr. Savance, or Natchez Vet, and Dr. Gary of Bluff City. We have limited things, we buy stamps and stationery, and that's about it. We do buy traps, people that know about trap neutralize, that's feral cats, which slash community cats, we try to trap them, get them fixed, and let them go. Some people let them stay on their property to be working cats, which is an awesome situation. We have several businesses in town that have done that. Dunley being one, Monmouth they done it, Blankensimes, Good Hope does it. There's a lot of several businesses that do that, believe it. We loan the traps out, try to get them back every now and then, we don't get them back. But that is an expense we have, and they're about $75 per trap. We have around 30 right now, some of those were donated, not called completely purchased by us. So far, since we began, over 4,300 local pets have been fixed. And 600 of those, over that was feral cats. If anybody knows a cat or a dog having one litter, you think about each one of those having at least one, you're up in the thousands. So we do know that we're making a difference. This year so far, just six months into this year, 324 dogs and cats have been fixed. We get about four or five dozen calls each month for help with spay neuter costs. So I just want you to think about it when you do a preparation request and keep us in mind, we appreciate your support.
Thank you, I do have a question. I got a call the other day from somebody, this lady in town, I'm not going to mention any words at it. They might have 40 to 50 cats in a subdivision. You can smell the house from two houses away. What do you, who takes care of that? Who can go talk to this lady or these people and try to do something about that? Because I mean, it's kind of getting, getting into whole neighborhoods area.
Yeah, I mean, we, like I say, we have the traps, we can help get them fixed. But when people do trap neutralize, it's a zero co-pay, we pay full, because the people doing the tracking are doing a huge favor for us. The only thing, that would be kind of a group effort, we can call Animal Control, maybe talk to the shelter. We have hoofbeats and paw prints can take sometimes, if they have room, the transport. They don't get friendly cats and kittens, and they can go to other parts of the country, that's the best case scenario. We try to trap if we can, we don't have a ton of trappers, that's why we depend on the community to help us. It's just a group effort, and we'll do what we can. I mean, we've, we've helped big projects before, but it's a lot of work, we try to find bars, the ones that aren't as friendly. It's just kind of different situations.
Might be more of a welfare check, yes, ma'am?
If it's in the city of Natchez, last year, Natchez passed an ordinance that limits the number of pets that you can have. And so I would have someone, if it's in the city, call Animal Control.
She just took what I was going to say.
Okay, well, that'd happen to me in school all the time. Got angry, but okay, thank you very much.
Mr. President, oh, you, I just want to let you know that I used to be scared of cats, but like you say, the cats kind of keep the snakes away. And the lady that was really feeding a few of the cats we had, she just sold her house and moved. So nobody feeds the cats, now the cats are gone, I need a couple. I haven't been seeing snakes though, that's for sure, they keep the snakes away.
They do, snakes and rodents, they're good workers. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right, Melissa Wade with the City Department of Child Protection Services. All right, city government business, if any, very city government business. Seeing you came out of the graveyard.
Mr. President, let me ask you a question. What we did at the last meeting over there with the city, is all it straight and good and ready to go now? Or we need to do something else?
I've got a draft ILAs that have sent over to the city, Megan just responded back that the fire one's good. And, you know, we're waiting on the other two.
What you mean?
That.
I'm talking about Morgantown Road, this is what I'm talking about.
They accepted the contracts, so my understanding is that they've appreciated, you know, the notice of intent to start.
So they're going to let the city know when they plan on starting or whatever it may be?
I guess they have a pre-construction meeting and they, you know, get started just like anything else.
Could you stay in contact with the city and keep us informed of what's going on? I mean, just keep us informed.
They're in the contract now, they did that at the, at the meeting.
So they have so many days to start and finish. Thank you, sir.
And if any of y'all don't know what they're talking about, we reached an agreement with the city to do a joint deal on Morgantown Road. And so I guess they'll be starting on that soon. It's going to be a bit of a nightmare, I'm afraid, while they're working on it. People are going to just have to be patient, it's going to take a while, and it's, it's going to, it's going to be kind of messy. But at least when we do finish it, it's going to be nice, a lot nicer out there, be a much better commute. Okay, so that's all city government business. Could you tell them we need to start on this, or Scott, what you want to do next before we get into?
Today's the first meeting of August, and so it's time to hear the objections for the tax rule. The advertisement was published, the clerk has the proof of publication. So this board has jurisdiction to hear those tax objections. And we have, I think, three as of Friday?
Yes.
Have we checked this morning?
I'd like to go ahead and get those out of the way.
I had, Tuesday, I told, yeah, page checked this morning, and then I told them that anything came up until now, yeah, I'm done, please bring it in.
To let you in?
Yes. So we received three.
We need a motion to find those things, open this board to.
All right, need a motion. Moved by Mr. Middleton, second by Ms. Hudson, all in favor?
So we did receive three objections on number four of 9:00 AM this morning. Those were from World Energy Natchez LLC, Natchez Newspapers, Inc. And this is from O'Connor and Associates.
The Lodge in Natchez?
The Lodge in Natchez, correct, we just got this on late Friday. Correct, Lodge in Natchez LLC, so those are the three that we received. I think, is there, just want to remind, I don't think we're as present for either of us.
Call them up, which one you want to hear first?
Hey, don't matter.
About World Energy.
Good morning.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm Paul Stevenson here, appearing on behalf of World Energy Natchez LLC with respect to the assessment of World Energy's industrial personal property at its location on Berry Road. We have filed an objection based on our understanding of what the role reflected as of July 15. And we have essentially two requests. One is the removal of industrial personal property that is no longer in use. It is equipment that's really been out of use since 2018. It's actually the subject of a request that we made with respect to the 2023 tax year earlier before the board. But because it has not been used, because it has, we've been unable to sell it. Most of it is obsolete in the truest sense, we've asked it to be removed from the role. The second aspect of our request is a request for obsolescence. World Energy unfortunately had a financial loss of more than $5 million in 2022. Operations substantially declined in 2023 to the point that we are no longer operating unfortunately as 2024. Have not throughout the year, we have a skeletal task. And in our judgment, it warrants an adjustment for obsolescence. The obsolescence has resulted from economic factors that are outside of our control as well as the inutility of our personal equipment. So those are our two requests that we have made. And with removal of the property, we have included in our request, the, as I said, the reduction of those values. And in doing so, it would result in a reduced assessed value of $593,872 by our calculations based on the role information that we had earlier received. I will add, if I may, I had discussed with Ms. Hedwood at some length, I really appreciate her cooperation and assistance in walking us through the process. But it remains unfortunately, the World Energy Natchez, its economic situation is dire. The operations, as I said, are not presently continuing. But based on my conversation with Ms. Hedwood, we trust or hope that there could be an opportunity to remove this personal equipment as well as a recognition of obsolescence.
Okay, and what is the stance of the tax assessor?
Mr. President?
Yes?
Before we move on, I guess everybody on this board understand what obso, who?
Obsolescence.
Okay, could you break that down to where everybody in the room can understand what you're talking about?
Under the Mississippi tax regulations and the calculation based taxes based on the true value of the equipment. What is it worth? But in Mississippi, it's done on what's called a cost basis. What did you pay for the equipment when you got it? Then you apply what's known as an escalation or multiplier trend to take the cost number from the date of original acquisition, here for example, in 2003 or '04, to move it forward to current conditions. And then you depreciate it. So that gives you a number of original costs trended by multiplier, reduced by depreciation, meaning of course, the loss in value over time due to the use of the equipment and its physical condition. The regulations however, permit additional adjustments to the true value of the property based on obsolescence. It can deal with obsolescence, meaning that it no longer is usable or no longer continues in the same original condition that it was, to mean it's obsolete in the broad sense. There's reams of expert crinels and those types of things, but basically, and I know Ms. Hedwood can help here, there's a functional obsolescence as it relates to the inutility of the property. And then there is an economic obsolescence that deals with the loss in value of the property due to conditions outside of the property itself and its control. But obsolescence is a reduction in the true value of the property. And so our respectful request, as I said, is to fold, remove equipment from the road that hasn't been used in six or seven years at least, and has no value. And then second, recognize that the value of the equipment, the equipment that remains is less than its original cost as trended and depreciated. And our request, given that we're not doing anything right now other than maintaining a skeletal staff, was a request in 2024 for a 50 cent, excuse me, 50% reduction in value.
Mr. President, thank you, Mr. Stevenson, you did a great job. Me and whoever else didn't understand what you were talking about, I understand that.
Anyone else? All right, Mr. Gray, if you don't mind.
If y'all remember, Mr. Stevenson came before us and asked to fix 23 first. So where we stand, we have to fix 23 as far as removing the equipment for '24. I don't have a problem with it, but 50% obsolescence, no. 20% yes, but 50% I just can't see.
What is the 20% amount?
20% is, it would just be a 20% more depreciation.
Depreciation on?
Correct. It wouldn't be a 50%. 50% would not be less than $100,000.
And his, his figure of $593,000, that's not tax dollars, that's what we're taxing.
Right, and that's.
In tax dollars.
Is that seven pieces of equipment? No, the seven, the seven pieces of equipment is 1.78, something like that.
My calculations using the personal property listing that I have for 2024 resulted in an assessed value after removing the personal property and a 50% obsolescence reduced the assessed value of $593,000. That's what's in our objection.
Right.
So I could run some math real quick and tell you if you could on the 20. But it's still, it'll be, is it 700, what number, do you have a number that you?
No, not, not for '24, because we've got to fix 23 first. We've got to correct the bill for '23, and then I can remove those items for '24.
Okay, when do you totally remove something off the road? Is, after he's hauled it to a scrapyard or removed it from the property?
And they're going to have to fill out, finish filling out the rendition that they created this year for the equipment to be removed for '24. I received the rendition, but it didn't have that equipment, so we're going to have to correct.
I'm asking it to be removed from the road.
Right, right, but it's got to have the rendition for me to remove it from the road. Or I can use your paperwork.
Mr. President? This is like, we dealing with, and I heard you say, we're going to make a motion, then we take this under advisement.
Second, I'm motion.
All right, motion by Mr. Gray, second by Ms. Hudson, all in favor? We're going to take it under advisement.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, what's the next?
I talked with the president of the Natchez Newspaper LLC. I know that Jan's here, as, under that organization, but as a reporter, they were not going to show up on it. If they had some sort of paperwork showing that their real property was less, they were going to supply it over to. Yeah, we could take that under advisement and end it later, but if they can come up with some sort of fact of what they're saying.
How much motion, then we take it under advisement?
Motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Gray, any discussion? All in favor? Any nays, motion carries.
Final one, the Lodge in Natchez, is anyone here from the Lodge in Natchez?
The Lodge.
That's actually, yeah, the Fairby, Fairby, the one out there on Devil Road.
Oh, when you say Lodge, my buddy knows somewhere.
Run Lodge, something.
That's the big name for it, the company.
Okay.
Uh, this, there was a, O'Connor Associates, Randy York from O'Connor and Associates. They had a power of attorney signed for the, it's the owner Adams Scope LLC. The property's in the name of the Lodge in Natchez. They filed a profit loss sheet showing that that place loses $386,000 a year. The profit loss sheet's not certified by CPA. They're not present, and I don't think Randy York is an attorney, if he is, he didn't put his bar number to indicate that it was. I would, in the very least, I would still recommend we take it under advisement, but I'd also like to send them a demand that they supply justification for the profit and loss sheet. At the end, it'd be projected anyway, but that's just another way to do it.
I need a motion.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Gray. Second by Ms. Hudson, any discussion? All in favor? Any nays? Motion carries.
Mr. President? Where energy, how long they been out there?
World Energy, I think, maybe 16 or 17 is when they.
Yeah.
No, they were.
They purchased it in 16.
Were they before that?
Elvont, yeah.
So they not under that 10-year deal where we?
They never received the tax?
Okay, I'm good then.
They never applied for it, yeah.
They did, well, World Energy didn't, but Elvont's got a fee and live, but they didn't fill their terms.
I was wondering was we going to lose money like that? Because, you know, we got these people coming here, we give them that 10-year deal, and after eight, nine years, they take their hat, they cook, and they leave.
That's what I don't want to do.
And we don't get nothing.
Yeah.
So we got to stop, stop doing that.
Yeah, we, with them, they've been paying their tax, and they never had any exception.
So.
All right, need a motion, go ahead.
Ms. Peggy?
Yes, sir.
Okay, he have to remove everything out of the building that he's talking about he want a discount on or whatever the case may be? We just don't give him no discount, and they leave their stuff in there?
No, sir, I'm going to check and make sure it's gone, because that's a lot of money.
So is it gone now, or you don't know?
Yes.
But it is gone?
It's gone.
Okay.
Those seven pieces, but they had not been rendering that. All they were doing, well, for two years, they never rendered, and then this past year, they rendered.
Okay.
But this is for 2024 that they remove, not for '23 now.
Yeah, now for '23, he's wanting that same equipment removed.
Right.
So we have to do '23 before we work on '24.
Well, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Can we go there for that? Is it legal for us to do that?
Yes, sir, he has up until.
Is there anyone else here for their taxes, 2024 tax rule? Anyone here for their 2024 tax rule, anyone here?
Okay, we close that, we need a motion. Moved by Ms. Hudson, second by Mr. Gaines, all in favor? All right, departmental reports.
Good morning, good morning, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, President, Mr. Wilson, and Board Supervisor, I want to say so, I'm honored to be here this morning. My name is Larry, he is an Adams County Tax Assessor. You know, time is moving, moving right along, so I'm. You know, time is moving, moving right along, so I'm here today originally to talk about, uh, appraising. Therefore, Herron Appraiser and Computer Service, it's a time for us to renew this contract. So that's what I basically want to talk with you about. Therefore, as, uh, Mr. Herron and Lang Appraiser, sir, they're a really good job. We have been able to put things together with the production department, the transfer department, so that's an honor and privilege for us to say that we all working together as a team. When we work together as a team, that means a whole lot. Before, when you talk about the figures or what needs to be done, there's no increase in figures. Everything will remain the same as it has the last forty years. So if there's any additional questions, uh, we'd be more happy to entertain that. And I want to thank you very much for your help.
Okay, Mr. Stephanie, where are we? Prophesies, what he's trying to do, we're still on board with that? Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
We need a motion.
Hold on one second. Do you have the contract with you?
Do you have?
Yes, I have it.
Okay, you got it. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I need a motion to renew their contract, and I'll make it, I'll make a motion.
Second. Motion by Ms. Hutchins, second by Mr. Gray. Any discussion?
Renew it with the same information that they had on the level. I don't want them to change.
Any, any more discussion? All in favor? Any name, motion carries.
I'm meeting with the assessor in office, Larry Hughes' office. Um, Kim Infinger is our new employee. She took my remires place. And hopefully she'll start doing the board orders every now and again. Uh, I've got one board order. Well, I'll leave the, uh, World Energy with you. Last month, I came to you with Mr. Diamond. Remember Mr. Diamond up there at the Basil's house? He wanted the, uh, abatement removed. When I called and told him it was denied, he come back with, well, I want it on the ten percent. Because he had homestead, he filed homestead on the place, but the abatement was not on the homestead. So he's wanting it to come down to the ten percent instead of fifteen percent, which would be a loss of a thousand three ninety, a thousand three hundred ninety-nine dollars and forty-nine cents. That's what his, his next adventure was after I told him the, uh, the abatement stayed on the road for this year. So now he's wanting a reduction.
And what's your recommendation?
Did he file homestead?
He filed it, and he got it on the big, on the big bill, on the regular house bill. But it was not put on the abatement, you know, because there was two different pin numbers. The abatement pin number and the house pin number. Okay.
Mr. President, uh, help me out because I know I gotta get over the house. When I file homestead, it'd be on one pin number, so what you mean is on two different pin numbers? Are there two different properties?
No, for the abatement, when the mayor offered everybody an abatement that would come in and rent their house.
I know how they come.
And that would come on separate pin, because that abatement would be, have an exemption with the city for seven years, where your normal house would not be exempt because it's not part of the abatement. So the amount of the abatement had to go on a different pin.
I got you.
Does that make sense?
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, if it's part of his homestead, should it be?
Yes.
Tax as a homestead?
Go ahead, Ms. Hutchins.
It should be down, it should be at ten percent. That's.
What's your recommendation?
I would put it to ten percent because it's.
That's what I think too. If it's part of his homestead.
Yeah, it's, it's part of the homestead.
Okay, you need a motion for that?
Yes.
So.
Move by Mr. Middleton.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines. Any more discussing? All in favor? Uh, any names? All have motion carries.
And I also, um, have a correction for the recap. Uh, when I gave you the first recap, the, uh, automobile's of the mobile homes were not correct. And, uh, then I received the, uh, public utilities. So now I've got the corrected mobile homes and corrected automobile's and the, uh, public utilities for the recap. So I need to give you a corrected recap. And that's all I have.
All right. We need a motion to accept the recap that she's about to pass out.
Ms. Infinger, welcome to Adams County.
She's been here a long time now.
Now, you said.
Okay, jealous. You're welcome, Peggy. Welcome to.
I'm still in France, but you know I'm.
So she's gonna start coming to the board with this information, some of it, you've been doing for years? Because they didn't have anybody that would.
Y'all ain't right.
Oh, oh, Ms. Peggy, you finna go?
Oh, yes, sir.
I'm thinking about what she said.
And they, I don't tell you. Oh, yeah, I know. You ain't, you ain't gonna be that lucky, right? I'm speaking with you.
That's it?
Yeah, you are.
Oh, okay.
Does everyone have a copy of the sheet?
Your drink's not coming through?
Nah, you got it.
I got it. I'm guessing with you. But is your work going there?
You all right with me? I don't care what nobody else say about you.
You know, you know, boy, that is. Give us somebody else a break.
No. What's everybody want to hear? Ma'am?
Need a motion?
Yes, y'all. Motion by Mrs. Hutchins.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any names? Motion carries.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
All right, have a good day.
Come on.
Morning.
I have two things this morning. First thing, I want to request to rehire an employee. It's a rehire and a replacement, a case of a re-ru.
Okay, I've got it. Uh, telecommunicator, twelve dollars an hour, twenty-four thousand, nine hundred sixty dollars annual rate. Yes.
Only question I had, it had, wasn't anybody that fired or just, that's, that's the only question I had. Was it somebody that fired?
Just, just person, okay. The person that you, you replacing the person that had been fired.
You know, I said, the person that you rehired had, they, they left, they, you didn't, they wasn't fired.
She was not terminated.
It wasn't terminated.
More money or whatever.
I got the understanding. All right, so move, Mr. President.
Uh, move by Mr. Gaines.
Okay.
Second by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any names? Motion carries.
Also, I have a question.
Uh, my question was, uh, if, if there, the person that you replacing was terminated.
Yes.
Uh, had that person went through the grievance process?
Yes.
Yep, they didn't appeal it?
Oh, I don't know. She.
Well, the reason I'm asking is because the process is the human resource, then it go to Ms. Stefan, then it come to us. I don't want to get in a situation.
She fired one of them.
Okay, I just don't want to get in a situation where she appealed something, then we done hired somebody else for her job, then we have to give her her job back, then you gotta let somebody else go because we didn't.
Well, I did talk to human resources. She don't have no pay to work on or anything like that. She was still on her main paper probation period. So, um, she had filed a thing for it.
Did she have the incentive?
She had exit.
She didn't have that?
She had what?
She had a.
Say that I do.
Exit area.
Yeah, she had exit area.
Okay.
Okay. You wanna?
Yeah, we can.
Yeah, we can ask that, but go ahead.
Approve?
Yes.
Okay. Also, uh, the furniture for the new building, um, with, uh, Scott has a contract and, uh, in lieu of a PO, they're asking to sign a contract where they can try to move the new furniture in that you have, you have to schedule the furniture in advance. So since we can't get a PO right now, that the next budget year, they're asking to sign a contract, you know, in lieu of a PO to get it moved in October.
Is this the furniture that we're getting a grant to?
Yes, she's here with the paperwork that you're writing, yes.
Okay, may I say something?
Yeah.
I just have a question. Um, how can we do a PO if we haven't submitted for a request of furniture? For the equipment, I'm confused on that.
She's asking for a, not a PO, but a contract, an agreement to purchase this, uh, equipment. The purchase would be after this fiscal year. The board would be saying, yeah, we'll agree to do that. You still have to do a PO to, to purchase it.
Is that pending grant pool or?
He got it.
Yeah. Because, because those buildings are around. Yeah, then we have to look at.
Oh, yeah.
So we can hold off until they do it, but the pricing of the furniture, is that, so that's the calculation?
Yeah, we need to see if the, um, we need to take it down and see if they're not price guarantee or price hold.
Okay, I, I do.
Let me ask a question. Does their contract being signed, if you, that's what you asking for, contract to be signed?
No, what is that, uh, Scott? That's a contract that they're saying that we will purchase from them.
Right, that's what they're asking for.
Okay.
And the grant, we're still waiting on, if you're back on the grant?
Okay, who are we purchasing from? Who is it we supposed to be purchasing?
Zabex, Zabex.
Do you have, did y'all get a figure of that? Do we have?
Yeah, we, we have all of that. I, I, I gave everything to Scott.
Okay, is that?
And she had, she has it too as well.
Being budget, you putting it in the budget?
No. I'm not gonna put it on. I don't, you know, I don't cut people off. I was talking, maybe get recognized as a president because we here, but I don't.
Okay, I don't think he put it in the budget. We're trying to get stuff approved, set up. So if it is approved, you can put it in, am I correct? So he just asked me to bring it across the board so you all can be aware of what's, what's taking place to get it settled. This first time they don't believe this, so.
One of the things that they want to do to move the furniture, dispatch furniture, the request for dispatch furniture originally included a hundred thousand dollars. You got another one for seventy-five thousand dollars.
It's seventy-three with fifty thousand dollars.
You're asking, you're asking for a grant for fifty thousand dollars?
Yes.
And Lynette, we don't know what, when the grant?
I have documents to get approved by President Wilson today so I can submit the application.
Okay, so we haven't even applied for it as of yet?
Correct.
So furniture, new equipment is needed. It's needed anyway, but we've been holding off on getting the new equipment because you have it installed wherever it's at, so it makes sense to install it at a, a flip location we're just gonna make, need. Um, there's a fencing that's needed to be done. Uh, anything else that's?
Yes, I gave you this hour, so we got four, so.
Some various things. A major part of it, of course, is the equipment. Um, typically, we've done a lease purchase on the equipment. That's what this, wouldn't be within this budget here, it's gonna be something that the board has to budget for the ne- next fiscal year.
Okay, and we, did we look at surplus property in Ottawa Council? Do we?
They don't have surplus property for dispatch furniture.
Okay.
Yeah, it's like this special.
Other stuff from, but not.
I asked the same question, because I was, you know, I got the sense, but it's like these few little things.
Cheapest property or whatever, but they don't have this tax furniture, they have surplus.
Okay.
So we get all the other surplus that they have.
I was just wondering, did you go through there with?
Oh, yeah, I'll be checking there.
Okay.
I tried to get the cheapest rate possible we can for this department. Circles do not have dispatch furniture, so we can get other items from there, but not the dispatch furniture. So the cheapest they got of this furniture then is seventy-three thousand. If we get approved for the grant, it's fifty thousand dollar grant. So we just come, we're looking for, we're trying to get an idea for the next budget year when we have everything set up and planned.
Sounds good.
And we trying to get it approved, so that's.
All right, and you need a motion to approve me signing this, uh, application for the grant?
Yes.
Okay.
So.
That's what.
That's what.
That's what I was.
Okay, well.
She's asking for.
Well, you're seeing that we're already there. Can we go ahead?
Yeah, she was coming for that, but then Scott has some paper where they're saying if we get approved for the grant, they just asking him to sign off on it because we can't get a PO to make next fiscal year.
Okay.
So they're just wanting that sign saying we're gonna get the furniture for them with the approval of the grant or whatever.
Okay.
That's what he was talking about.
All right, um, so we're gonna go ahead and do the motion, uh, Ms. Hutchins. And I need a second to sign this, that case, second by Mr. Gray. Any more discussion?
Miss, Miss Smith, is it a match? No match?
Yes, I, it is. Um, I was coming to mention that. So the, um, county match will be around thirty-three thousand, two ninety-one, ninety-eight.
The grant?
Grant for?
That's the facility furniture.
How much is it for? The total?
Oh, it was seventy-three.
Is it forty or ten thousand dollar grant?
Yeah, USDA will only grant up to fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
So we getting a fifty thousand dollar grant, and we got a matching, with thirty-three thousand?
Yeah, that's what that gonna mean.
Well.
It's actually, our county is fifty-five percent grant eligible, so that's why, that's how I calculated it. But USDA will only, um, pay up to fifty thousand dollars.
So then we'll get fifty thousand.
I can hear you.
It's paying up to fifty thousand.
Correct.
Right, don't even mean that we don't get the whole fifty thousand.
That's, you know, that's USDA's policy, no.
So, let me, let me, let me ask you.
So the grant's gonna be about forty thousand or less?
Possibility. Yes, they can't guarantee, but it's up to fifty thousand dollars that they can.
Mr. President.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That, that was my question to the administrator and, uh, to the attorney. Uh, with her having a possibility of the grant, and we hadn't applied for, and we assigned, like you said, what you said, we're gonna have to have it anyway. I just wanted to make sure that we was gonna have something to cover that in case of possibility, because we had not applied for the grant. The grant has not been approved yet, and it's not even up to, it's up to fifty. So I don't, I didn't want the board to come up and approve, uh, the furniture without having somewhere in the budget. Not saying not getting your furniture, but I'm talking to the administrator because this is a possibility. We need to have some ducks in the row, so we want to prove it, and then we be looking for money if we don't get it.
Mr. President.
I give.
Mr. Attorney, I'm listening to everything everybody's saying and, uh, this board have made a decision that we was gonna relocate them to this new building. And at the end of the day, we still gonna have to buy the furniture. My thing, my question to the attorney is, if Plan A don't work, can we use Opera Farms to purchase furniture for the, the new building that they going into? I'm just asking, because it's a one-time deal, it, it, can we do that?
I would presume so, yeah. Now, we used it to buy a building, so I don't think it'll be an issue with.
So they gonna come get?
And we, and we sign, we're signing a, a deal with the city already for the nine-one-one. We already know that they're gonna be putting up their spare share, whatever the expenses are.
With both those agreements, they don't take into effect. Equipment and the cost, all that stuff is just an employee.
Okay.
I'll just go ahead, Mr. President.
Okay, any more discussion?
I would like to just offer my point of view on it, um, as far as, I'm not trying to hold up anything, but I would like to go ahead and apply for the grant first, but also making sure that we adhere to the purchasing laws, making sure that we have tools compared to break quote before we sign that agreement, because I don't want us to be stuck with an agreement. So let us give it to purchasing clerk and let's, uh, that and make sure that. Okay, yeah, okay.
We did that already, only thing I'm saying is, in order to be in there for the next budget year, you have to set up one of them.
I didn't want to be, I didn't wanna rush on signing the contract and.
Yeah, we've already did all that.
Yeah, we.
I've got with the purchasing clerk.
Okay, may I speak, we, we did two quotes, one was a hundred thousand, hundred, a hundred and seven thousand, and the other was seventy-three thousand, nine something. So we had the two, and the seventy-three is below the seventy-five thousand threshold, so.
Right, right here.
It's only two vendors that do this.
I just saw the source, I didn't wanna get it, so then either I wanted to put my eyes on it, and we don't get it, cause I had them.
I can give you both of them.
Just make sure we have apples, apples and apples, just make.
I'll check it out, I'll tell you what we have.
These already been moved.
Yeah.
And I was just going, asking their man to motion to, uh, approve, uh, after the, uh.
County administrator?
Yeah, the county administrator, but, oh.
Yeah, certainly.
I mean, it's gonna be, yeah, they have their motion.
Okay, any more discussion?
Mr. President, I'm gonna make a recommendation, and I don't know if it's the right recommendation, but for to keep us on board, and I think it would be better if anything gotta go through the purchasing young lady, she need to present this, and then we'll know it's already went through her, then it won't be that confusion up there. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah.
Cause she would have presented it, then we wouldn't assume that she didn't know.
Issue is that Lynette's never had approval for any of this stuff, and so she does go, I send her to purchasing, and that's, you gotta go through purchasing, she'll go through purchasing, she'll come back, and then she has to ask this board to approve these type of things. So it's been through purchasing, the motion that we have is pending, county, county administrators are about to review. And so, and that's why it didn't come from, when, when our purchasing department brings us something, it's usually already been budgeted and approved, and so if your department head's asking for something new, they need to present them.
Okay, I didn't know, because everybody up here, like, we confused.
You are, you, you, not confused, but this is new, that's why it's something that the board never approved.
Uh, President Wilson, I just wanna also say, also, when it comes to something like this too, you need to inform your county, county administrator for communication, but she just didn't even know it had gone through the purchasing process, so everybody need to be on the same accord when we discussing something like this.
Yeah, Lynette will call him and Matt, I'll let him know it's gotta go through purchasing, she'll do it anyway.
That's what I'm saying, it's a little bit tricky, cause I'm like, why are they trying to force us to sign a contract so fast, that's all.
It's not a contract, they just saying, for that price, they're just saying, if we sign something to let them know that we in process, we can make an appointment to have it installed the next budget year, you know what I'm saying? To get on the books, would say, okay, cause they're coming from our town, so they're just saying, they need something to be able to come down and install it in advance.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor? All right, any names, motion carries? Have you got anything else?
Yes, I'm also asking for a request to discuss and approve the, the raises for attorneys to send over to the city for the next budget year.
We, we don't, we look at the raises during, out the budget, at the end of the budget or during budget year?
During budget.
Well, I just talked to him about, he just said, have he proved?
No, no, we don't, we're doing, we're doing budget.
So I don't, I don't know how that work, I'm just.
If it's approved during budget time, it'll be.
Miss Lynnette, I had not forgot about you, about the refrigerator, I looked at two of them that I had at one spot, and I, those are like giveaways, I just, I'm not gonna bring them up there, I got two more to look at at one of my other warehouses, so I haven't got you.
Thank you, this is all I have.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Lynette Smith, I'm from Mississippi County, Belton District, um, just to recap, so the, I have approval to go on and submit the application documents with U S D A in our one-one facility purchase.
Yes, is there, is there more than one page for me to sign this?
There's several pages you should have.
That I should sign?
Yes.
Okay, I need.
I have the original tear book here with a little tab if you wanna look.
Oh, okay, that means, that means that I have.
Um, also, did the board approve the master resolution? Fourth, I'm sorry, excuse me. Did the board approve the master resolution for that?
Oh. Well, good, uh, yeah, we, you have got it approved. You say there's a resolution?
It's just on the very first page.
Okay.
You want separate, one for this resolution?
Yeah, just a resolution, authorizing application.
All right, need a resolution, a, a, a motion for a resolution for the application for the grant itself.
So move.
Moved by Ms. Gray?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any names? Motion carries.
Thank you. Second, I have, under the, um, American Rescue Act Home Improvement Grant Project for Adams County, I have, um, Mr. Supervisor Middleton's applicant is complete with construction, I have the invoices for approval, um, repaid, I have the contractor's invoice, the inspector's invoice, and the developer's invoice, I need permission to pay these.
Make a motion, that?
Another motion.
So move.
Do you have permission to pay who? Whoever, whoever she said?
Supervisor Middleton's applicant.
Oh, no, okay, oh, I thought you said Supervisor Middleton.
Moved by Ms. Gaines, seconded by Mr. Middleton, any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any names, motion carries?
Thank you, um, third thing, under the same American Rescue Act Home Improvement Grant, sorry, um, I have final cost certification forms, um, for Supervisor to sign, um, just simply state that the project was completed, the dates, and, um, the applicant's name, so I have Supervisor Hutchins, Gaines, and Middleton's form, just permission to approve and perhaps have him to sign please.
So.
Moved by Ms. Hutchins, seconded by Ms. Gray? Any discussion?
We, we had the.
All in favor?
We still have funds available for President Wilson and.
No, he already shipped it.
Oh, yeah, I got one, and Ricky got one. See that? I believe that up to you.
Nah, the question was, did you have any money left over from, uh, like, she did two, I did two, he did two, he did one, from that? Did it go all the way up to?
I would go back and find it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, so lastly, I have, I, we, I was listening to the conversation in reference to the Morgantown Road project. As you all are aware, I was working on the D R A, critical infrastructure grant application. Um, I don't know if we should go into a closed session of what we need to do about this situation, cause I have the application ready to submit and what, um, this remaining funds that's, uh, showing to complete the project. And I notified, uh, Ms., uh, Attorney Silver about the situation, uh, along with the engineer. Um, current engineer's estimates, and I also emailed you as well, um, Gray.
Yeah.
Current, um, engineer's estimates, and with the, uh, bid that was received, we're looking at close to eight hundred thirteen thousand dollars remaining. So I'm a little confused on this project in reference to how these remaining funds will be paid, because with the D R A's application, I cannot show the remaining balance. All funds have to be, um, calculated for, you know, in order for me to submit the application. So if we can discuss this further later, um.
That's a different page. What I'll do is get with, like the city had done for phase two, which is underway, for phase one, I'll get with Lynette, and we'll get with supervisors and, you know, put together what James Johnson basically did, so that we can present this to the board, both boards in a orderly fashion. There's additional funds that we needed to, to finish Morgantown Road, and some of them we'll only get with grant, and some of them will have to be with local match, even with the D R A funds. So we just need, you know how James Johnson brought down every value, this is coming from this and so forth, put the same thing for phase one. I mean, you're right, we, we just have to, you know, make sure we're on this, these funds are going here, and those funds are going there, have it all separated out.
Go ahead. Mr. President, yeah, that's what I was saying, I don't know, if you can get with them, Morgantown is being done, done in two phases. So he's doing, we doing one phase now, so I think the money you're talking about is gonna be in phase one. Would you actually go back, you're doing phase two now, then phase one, the funds you're talking about, is it gonna be used on the next phase? And so, we had an opportunity to, you're an attorney, I think, was same thing James Johnson did with the other D R A fund, did they move from, like, Civil Street or whatever?
Yeah, so I'm gonna talk to.
They did both D R A funds too, sure.
I'm gonna talk with, we'll talk to Lynette and go through the funds are sourced in the two phases, make sure we're on the same page.
Mr. President? Um, I'll piggyback on what Supervisor Gaines said, um, I did get the email, but I thought, even though it's two phases, so, uh, when we applied for a grant for Morgantown Road, we applied for phase two? Or did we apply for Morgantown Road?
Did Morgantown Road, but I can go back and state phase two, that's not.
Well, could you get with the engineer, you get an up-to-date amount?
So the estimate that I provided is for phase one.
Okay, well, we, we do.
I used the unit prices that we received over the base two, and we moved it based on the term of the call for phase one.
Yeah.
So we already good, right?
The information that I have is from phase one, that.
Well, we good.
Yeah, we should be good, she just needs to know where that funding source is gonna come from, the eight thirteen.
Correct.
And to do that, it's gonna make sure we're not moving funds over in phase two, and the, you know, we just have to get clear in our, as they say, hearts and minds, and, and bring it to the board, you know, in a organized fashion.
Well, I think the city would be glad to know that we got additional funds for phase one, cause we can transfer a whole lot of funds all over the place for to help us for phase two. Now we got funds to help for phase one, I think they would be glad.
They'll certainly be glad, we just need to make sure our, our grant writer understands where, where the money's coming from and so forth.
And I have to have documentation.
Yeah.
Well, that's why they, them two, they need to communicate, right?
We've been communicating, but I still have not seen any commitment, but it's remained balanced, that's what I'm asking.
You got a balance of eight hundred dollars.
Eight hundred, thirty thousand.
Not eight hundred.
Say it again.
Eight hundred and thirty, right, eight hundred and seventeen thousand dollars.
That's what it's eight hundred dollars.
We're gonna have to ask, potentially, we need extra money committed, and to do that, we need to make sure we're organized and showing this fund's covered, this fund's covered, and so there's a balance of this, and we should have to get together and do that in the present, go forward and.
Okay, miss, wait, do you have a deadline?
No, this is, it's a, uh, there's not, there's no deadline to submit the application, no, sir.
Now, we want to submit, but I thought it was a deadline, too.
No, sir, it's.
It's gonna take a while for phase two, but we wanna already submit for phase one, right?
Go ahead, Ms. Lynnette.
So, Miss, Miss Milton, on, on the next time I know, I ain't gonna just say me, especially when we got, as a board, have to make a decision on that. When you email them, uh, something like that, would you next time just email the entire board, or email Scott to make sure?
Well, I have, and I wanna get a response back from Scott, but I have.
But email, okay.
You say you don't.
I checked my emails, and I respond.
I didn't, I didn't respond.
I don't think you respond back to it.
No, you don't either.
I don't respond to them too much, I look at.
Well, I bet you I respond though.
Oh, yes, you do. That's all I have.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just didn't see it.
Departmental report.
I look at.
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, my name is Arjen with Home Program, and, um, I am still here with, uh, recreation, everything with recreation building. Um, I have two bids for pine mounts to finish off the enclosure of the building that's out there. Um, one bid is for fifteen thousand six hundred, and another is for seventeen thousand five hundred and eighty dollars.
And what is this for?
Dealing with the recreation.
Recreation pine mount, that's a complete, uh, pine mount.
The, the building that's out there, the enclosure of the building.
Then we have the money there in recreation, and none of those still fall on us.
Oh, yeah, so, uh, I'll make the motion to accept the lower bid.
Motion by Mr. Gaines to accept the lower bid, seconded by Ms. Hutchins, I'll be all right in a minute. I wanted to catch her, but I'll, I'll call her, uh, any more discussion? All in favor? Uh, any names, motion carries?
I got a question, is there any more funds in recreation, or is all the?
Yes, all, everybody, it's all.
Okay.
Mrs. Lynnette, oh, you have something?
Yeah, I do, I do need to bring them up, I'm, we're trying to complete this fund, so I wanna bring this to the board's attention, uh, right now, we, uh, gotta, gonna have a small dilemma here, hopefully we got enough, we trying to catch the ends up to see, make sure, I want all the project friends in the area to see what we have left, but on the light fixtures, you know, we was putting, um, plug, R V plugs out there, and, uh, Rob can attest, we had, uh, Southwest Mississippi gave us a five hundred dollar quote on last November to put the lights out, uh, put the pole out, we'd already did thirty-one thousand dollars worth of work out there, we're getting everything installed, but now, when, uh, I called them, cause I got vagina, I got a rabbit, to make sure my ears was, wasn't right, the, the price that went from five hundred to right at seven thousand, to sixty, eight hundred dollars, so. But, so we done already put the, the plugs down, but now they, they was gonna charge us five hundred bucks to hook up, run the, run the other transformer and stuff like that, to make sure it don't mess with the other folk's life, but now we get ready to do it, I call them, we done went from five hundred to seven, to sixty, eight hundred dollars for them to hook it up, but we already got thirty-one thousand dollars worth of work out there, so before I came and asked them, just trying to, I need to make sure how much money we have, and, uh, cause we actually need to move forward getting those lights hooked up, because we got, um, we got that much work going through Thorx, uh, and I don't want our warranty to be out of, to make sure everything works.
Uh, Mr. President?
Go ahead, Ms. Lynnette.
I got that on my list, with the increase of, of, of Southwest and energy and all that, because they, they, they told me businesses has doubled. The amount that they pay, so what I need the president to do is, since we already had an agreement with them, can they grandfather us in on this handshake agreement we had before the increase? Because that's crazy.
Who y'all talking to, this Southwest?
Um, what's the guy?
The last?
No, no, uh.
Kevin Bonds?
No, he's a young guy, he's a.
McCormick, one of them, McCormick.
Which person?
Oh, oh, McCormick?
Yeah, I think it was McCormick.
You see what I'm trying to ask, since we already made this deal, even though it's not in writing, could they?
Yeah, we met out here two, three times, we didn't meet just one time, we met several times, and went over, and went over, and we called him in, and we went through, and he called, and called the supervisors, and things like that, and now we got ready, cause he called me a couple months ago, and he said, man, we got a problem. I said, no, I said, that ain't what he called us.
Yeah, and so I had been active calling before, I was trying to call supervisors, call folks to see what it is, and they, what, what he told me, he said, in November, things were definitely, he said, I don't know how much, he said, pricing, uh, product, uh, whatever they have, parts and stuff like that, and he says, I said, man, that much increase, I said, cause you know, it's a dilemma, I've been staying in budget, but y'all say from five hundred to seven thousand, that definitely.
Do we have anything written?
We didn't have anything written, we just all had a, me and Rob, Johnny, all of us went out there before we even started.
Give the two Southwest guys a show.
Yeah, like a general agreement to me.
Yeah.
Cause we were asking them what direction to go, what phases we need, or what we needed to supply little chemicals and all, where to put the box, transformer, metal, and they were going this and where you.
They said, a, a pole with, with the transformer?
Yeah.
What, is it s- single phase or? What, is it single phase or three phase or, uh?
Yeah, it's, it's gonna end up, then he said it was doing something, it's gonna be like a three-phase, he had to put a transformer down because it's gonna come out from main power to steam plant road, he wanted to make sure it wasn't gonna affect anything, 'cause it, all of their use-
Pedestals, he didn't know what they was pulling on, you know, how much amperage they were pulling and what they, when they set them.
I guess we need to get together and make a call, I can, I, I can call this guy first, but I need to know a lot, I need a lot more information. But I, I, I don't like that either, if I tell somebody I'm gonna do something, exactly what I'm gonna do.
Uh, before Miss Milton, oh, you two?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, thank you.
Before Miss Milton go, I know y'all received that, uh, M.DOT, uh, Alternative Program, Transportation Alternative Program, Bipartisan Infrastructure Law. Uh, Ms. Brandy, they say in order for us to, uh, apply for this, we have to have a, uh, audit of twenty-two and twenty-three, we don't have twenty-three yet, right?
We do not, they're gonna be here in the middle of August to start that, or actually, we've already started submitting paperwork to them, but they will not be in person until the end of August.
If the grant due September thirtieth.
So we won't have it by then, right?
I mean, I can let them know, but I-
Yeah, try, if, if they can't get it, then-
And I'll also forward it, uh, that email to George as well.
They're not even letting you have five of the grants now without the, the audit?
This one, they're, they're very strict on, you know.
It probably puts you ahead of the game if you had your audit.
Yeah, that's the reason we in the situation we in with Morgantown Road, because we had to let the city do it, 'cause our audit, our audit wasn't as supposed to be. So we, I guess, we'll let you know, not me, 'cause I don't do all this up there.
I mean, I'll email them right now.
So, do we need a motion to apply, just in case?
I think, well, all they can, worst they can do is tell you.
I knew that we applied for the Transportation Alternative Program, two thousand twenty-four Bipartisan Infrastructure Law, whatever.
I got a motion by Mrs. Gray, second by Mrs. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor?
And normally, normally, the, um, the county engineer submits that application, so I'll get with Mr. George and get that, you know, soon as we get the audit.
Get a copy of?
The, at the announcement, yeah, I can forward it to you, I thought I did, oh, to, to Ms. Brandy, okay.
He may have just had a-
What was the name of that, uh, grant?
Is it Transportation Alternatives Program twenty twenty-four?
It is, it is.
Transportation Alternatives, that aside ones for the bipartisan infrastructure. For M.DOT. Okay. For M.DOT. I'm sending it in there.
Okay.
Got another question, that's about them too, what about the USDA grant for Wildlife Service, it says something about that, for the B cap, do you recall what that is? What was it for? It said the USDA APHIS Wildlife Service. Uh, you want me to forward that to you, let you get that? Please, thank you. Okay, here, thank you from the Supervisor Association. That grant is from Octo- October one through September thirty-two, so I'll forward that to you. Thank you. One of the grants we need to look at. Okay.
All right, Bryce.
Good morning, the name, price, purchase order for Adams County Board of Supervisors. Firstly, I would like to spread the travel credit card across the Minnesota pool for June.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Gaines, second by Mrs. Hutchins, any discussion? All in favor? Any nays? Motion carried.
All right, secondly, I would like to ask for permission to advertise for the disaster debris monitoring for one year that's ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
So moved by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Gray, any discussion?
All in favor? Any nays? Motion carried.
Also, the previous board meeting, um, I had Stephanie to bring up about the, um, painting of the courthouse, and she read that, um, three bids we had, and I was informed it was under advisement. And I'm sure it was because you all wanted to know about the budget, was it coming out of the following, uh, budget, following year budget. So I spoke with the person that, um, won the budget, and he's willing to wait until, he said he'll hold that price until October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. So, um, I was giving you all the information on that, and, um, another, he asked if it's anyway, he understand that he's not gonna, um, be able to be paid until the end of the first phase. Um, if he could start before then, due to weather conditions, he wants to start driving for it, because, you know, August, after August, we come into the fall, and then he said that, um, painting. I just wanted to ask, he wanted to ask, so if you know, that's fine.
Okay, well, when we approve it then, as soon as we approve it, then he can, then we'll, he can, uh, start the work, and until then, we, we find, we gotta find the money first.
Talk to you.
Okay, Mr. President, that's what I say, I just say, you know, we, once we find the money, if, if that's what we gonna do, and we approve it, then we'll have to understand the time and weather conditions also, so, you know, if that's what we do. But, uh, I don't think we can actually, we, well, we can't start before we approve it, so, you know, just let them know that, appreciate them working with us, and if there's, uh, route we decide to go, we'll have to understand weather condition.
Um, lastly, I have a personnel issue and a person that needs to be addressed.
Determination, close at this session.
I have to be determined, okay. Thank you.
Good morning, boys, if you're back, I'm Brett, I have a camera space right here. I got a couple things this morning. First of all, on this sireen project, I was able to, uh, I was able to solicit, uh, some help from an out-of-state vendor on our sirens. Uh, so my purpose, instead of buying new radios and trying to get new sirens, uh, they make a board that fit in those, where we'll be able to be much cheaper, that we can be able to set the sirens off. And I did talk to the guy, and he wanted to use Adams County as a pilot project for the state, that mean they'll come down, free of charge, set up if it works, it's good, if it don't work, then the county won't be charged. But I just need the board to approve that, let us be a pilot program for the new siree upgrade.
I make a motion that we be a pilot program for the new siree.
All right, I got a motion, Mr. Gray.
What company is it?
Uh, it's, it's going to Jackson Communication.
Jackson Communication.
Yeah, they were working on the siree, so they was able to get this company to come in, and that Adams County be a tribe project, uh, so if we do good, we can go throughout the state, let everybody know they want a person to do the equipment, they just update the board, so it'd be much cheaper, they want a person to-
Okay, I got a motion on them. Uh, any more discussion? You did the second one, I'm sorry.
How many sirens are they gonna do?
We're gonna do all eighteen, well, they're gonna do, they're gonna do one first, I think they probably do two, one closer, one further, to see will it work, then if it, if it works the way we intend to do, then they'll give us a quote.
For the rest of them?
For the rest of them.
Let's just say, all eighteen for free?
No, any for eighteen for free, uh, we, I wish.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Any nays? Motion carried.
All right, secondly, we, uh, we have our NIMs, that's our National Incident Management System, that we have to abide by an emergency management in order to receive federal grant funding. Um, and with that, I have our compliance certification form statement, I gave it to Mr. President, so board, we need to adopt that and prove that for his signature on that little NIM supplies, that we may say in good grace that we, uh, receive grants, reach grants.
It's supposed to be in the folder?
Yeah, is it? That's mine.
Scott, you reviewed what he talking about, you didn't look over that?
Have you sent that to me?
No, that's, that's what we do every year, do purchase, yeah.
I still want you to look over.
Yeah, it's not a contract or nothing like that, he just saying that my office will, uh, apply, uh, abide by the National Incident Management System. She have a phone say Adams County?
Everything up here says Adams County.
That was this answer.
This one will say Adams County.
You say, uh, you brought a phone to yourself?
Yes, when I handed it to you, remember I told you this?
All by itself over here? Okay, emergency management, and IMS compliance certification statement, okay, you, we need to approve this?
Yeah, you gotta sign.
Need a motion? Moved by Miss Hutchins.
Second.
Second by Mr. Middleton, any discussion? All in favor? Any nays? Motion carried.
Okay, uh, next item, uh, the safe room showers, uh, right now, he's, he put the plumbing in, he had poured the concrete, so I'm probably getting with him to ride and see what they, he gonna try to get the, the concrete, uh, poured. So hopefully, if he get the concrete poured, we try, hopefully, we can finish this project up, uh, before the fall.
I wrote through this morning, okay.
Yeah, okay, so there's an update on that, uh, I don't know what we talked about with the grant.
I'm waiting on an update.
Okay, okay. Uh, next, I want to request travel, uh, for EMI, EMA PIOs, Ms. Bree Cooks and Ms. Nifa Harding, uh, they gotta travel to Mima, uh, for a PIO meeting, that's, I'll say, that's this Thursday.
All right, did he do that, form that?
No, they, they just turn around, it's just me.
Moved by Mr. Gray. Second by Mr. Middleton, any discussion? All in favor? Any nays? Motion carried.
Yeah, we, we wanna keep encouraging our residents, go ahead and sign up for our hyper-reach, uh, we, our numbers increasing, but, you know, we still got a, a long way to go, so just continue to push that out to the constituents, uh, continue to put it out on the assumption, media council, things like that. Make sure all our county employees that have county phone, make sure you sign up, uh, because those are some of the ways that, if Miss Stephanie needs to say anything, our county employees, department heads, we can use like this system. So let's make sure we get, uh, those phones signed up, uh, in those departments.
Do you have, do you have a list of the employees that have signed up or not signed up?
No, it, it, it don't say by name, so we just, yeah, we'll find out when we send it, send it, send a message out, they don't get their short work, so. We, we don't, uh, who hasn't been paying attention.
I think I signed up.
Thank you, sorry, okay, all right, all right, that's all I have, any questions for the board?
Okay, thank you.
Good morning.
How you doing, Dave?
I'm all right, uh-huh, cool. I have a couple things, uh, first, I have, uh, county VSO training, I'm requesting travel, uh, it will be from the twenty-fourth of September, uh, through the, uh, twenty, uh, twenty-third of September through the twenty-seventh.
To where?
Uh, Camp Shelby.
I've got his form here.
Yeah, uh, the hotel is, uh, the total fee is, uh, two hundred and eight dollars, and my-
So moved, okay, a motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mrs. Hutchins, any discussion? All in favor? Any nays? Motion carried.
Uh, the next thing is, uh, I was, uh, asking the board for approval for a parking spot over there, uh, at the building, 'cause when I leave and go out to see the veterans and come back, it's, it's hard, uh, for me to find a parking spot, I guess. And sometimes I have to park, all the way down there past the sheriff office or, uh, uh, over there by the main street, just to get back to the building, sometimes I have, uh, supplies and stuff I need to bring back in the office.
You don't need to get approved, you just need to get Johnny to, to get your sign on.
Does the board have anything to me? Any questions?
How things going out there, you, uh, reaching a lot of those, those guys?
Yes, uh, we, we've had about a twenty-five percent increase of, of veterans that, uh, signed up, that's in the system now, from, uh, the time I started, so, it, it's, it's going pretty good.
I know, I know we seem to have a lot of veterans in this area, I guess, you know, just because of demographics and, uh, people trying to find, find what's out there in the world, it's a good way to figure it out, some of these guys, though, they, they get in a situation overseas, and then I, I, I feel for them.
Yeah, it's, 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 uh, it's coming along pretty good. Uh, with the new system too, uh, it has gotten a lot, so, uh, once we put them in the new system, and fill in out their, uh, forms for their disability or their compensation, it, it's a easy thing, they, they only have to get off, and have to fill it out and, uh, have them sign on their phone, so that, that made it all the way.
I saw what he did, my dad, two tours in NOM, and, uh, it, it's like, I mean, I don't think anybody comes back the same after they go through some of those things. Appreciate you, man.
Thank you.
Oh, the other thing, Mr. Gaines has something.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, uh, I do wanna thank you for the, uh, job that you're doing, and, uh, how I kind of, how I evaluated, that's the less things we hear from the board, you know, we don't hear a complaint in the community, um, so, that says that you have been doing a, a pretty good job of turning that office around, so, you know, uh, we appreciate it and continue to, uh, keep doing it and continue to come to us, and, uh, if you have a problem or you need some support, we'll try to make a better for you, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Yeah, it makes a huge difference when, when they know somebody cares, and it's obvious that you care about the veterans, so we appreciate it.
You take out the email office, appreciate you.
It's made, it's already, it's made, it's trained.
Good morning, there, I'm Fire Coordinator, uh, I'm gonna put in a request, uh, missing reports about a burn ban, and, you know, we've been in triple digits for a heat index for the last, for two weeks, no rain, uh, so, and all C N's on the way, so we don't, yeah, people sending, and that, they call them pro burns, but they're pretty much burning big house, if, if we don't want this to get out of hand, you know, we can control it, so, just letting you know, we gonna put it in a request, when we get some this amount of rain.
You gonna put it in when?
Do you need a motion for that, or you just letting us know? Okay, you know, you did that last time we were here, and, uh, two days later, it started raining, raining ten days straight. Yeah, we do need a motion. I need a motion for the burn ban.
So moved.
Moved by Miss Hutchinson, second by Mr. Gray, any discussion? All in favor? Any nays?
Just trying to let people know that we gonna be on the burn ban, so I know, everything they say, they know, that we gonna start getting it out, the volunteers, put the flag out, the city will also.
As of today.
Yeah. So, I'm sending, sending information to them, and we get up on, um, they're up there.
Miss Gray, is the paper gonna record that? Thank you. Hold on one second, Darrell.
Are you gonna mail a letter, or are you gonna email that?
Uh, I can email, but I can get a copy.
Could you send it to me, please?
Yeah. If the agreement hasn't been set in stone about, you know, local agreement.
Man, man, we, we, hold on.
Well, I was just saying, 'cause-
Hold, hold, hold up a minute, hold up a minute. I don't even think we need to open that can of worms up, 'cause we already voted on this, and we already passed this. Go ahead.
I'm still just asking for rebate money for the volunteers. That's all I'm asking. The volunteers, again, been saying it all since I've been here, they come out, they help, don't get paid, don't get cash money. If we don't do anything, you know, hell, so all I'm asking for rebate money, so I, whatever they need, I can get. The stuff is getting old, the trucks are old, the equipment they use is old, and fire's enough to cost money, and I ain't talking about under a hundred dollars. So all I'm asking for is rebate money. So all I'm asking for is rebate money.
Is there any reason you can't get the rebate money?
Cause it goes to the interlocal agreement.
What do you mean?
All of it goes to the interlocal agreement. All the funds.
All the money go to the interlocal agreement?
Probably.
What is, now, if you're gonna have to tell us what the rebate money is, because, you know, you just say rebate, and I'm sure, I'm not the only person here that doesn't know exactly how much it is.
They get for like population, for the county, the city also gets it, and it's state fund that they give for, you know, with the volunteers, with, for equipment or anything like that. So, I mean, go ahead.
Okay, from my point of view, um, the state do allocate rebate money, it's up to the counties how we distribute it. Because we have interlocal agreement in place already, it would have needed to be in that interlocal agreement. Since we already agreed upon it, I don't think we can change it at this point.
Wha- what do, what do most counties do with that money that, that don't do what we're doing? Just so, just from my?
From my, from my previous experience, um, from my old county, um, they did, the county distributed the money to the volunteer fire departments, uh, to help with their purchases of, of equipment. Um, they have a formula based upon population, cause and all of that kind of stuff, but they did not have an agreement with the city to provide fire protection services.
I guess what my question is, how much money does volunteer fire usually get a month or a year?
Well, it was a year, and then, like last year, got like a hundred, hundreds of thousand dollars, I don't see that. They give like ninety to a hundred thousand dollars, and all depends on.
Do we use that revenue for the interlocal agreement?
So, Mr. President, so when the city came to us and wanted to use the money for, to get a fire truck, uh, was that part of the agreement?
That, you know, that's a good question, Rick, because that did not come up in that meeting we had, that, that, they said they were gonna help with that, they were gonna, yeah, and so did that happen?
So was that part of the agreement? Is it part of the interlocal agreement?
No, there's no.
So, just like we negotiated that when they need a fire truck, maybe we can go over there and talk to them and negotiate something when we need whatever we need.
We were told we'd be compensated for the, the ninety thousand dollar grant that we, we signed over to them and, and were we?
Did you put it in your budget request for the upcoming fiscal year?
No, by them, but, but rebate? No, I didn't put it, like you said, didn't know what we was going for the agreement.
My suggestion would be to put that in budget request and then we can look at it and see where the money funnels and so forth, if it's there, it's there, it's being used for the, in a local agreement, you know, you need that in a local agreement.
Alright, and Ms. West still sitting here, if there, if there's anything, that, any grant that can be applied or to help our, our volunteer firefighters, would you know of any, or do you know of any, Darrell, that we need to, because?
We, we talk often, so.
Okay, but all y'all are being paid.
Look into, and it might be a problem, and she can tell you to probably the hardest one, and just for fire trucks.
Uh, President, what's, how many firefighters are we talking about?
Uh, like you said.
You mean volunteer?
Volunteer, yeah, yeah, volunteer firefighter.
Like you said, on my roster, I have about fifty.
But how many are?
One that's actually coming out, might have fifteen, fifteen.
And you want this money to go to the volunteer fire department?
Yeah, but like you said, if they need equipment like novels, extra hoses or something like that, anything they might need to help them when they go out to cause, they have the money, gear.
We're not allowed to give them any money for their, for their gas or, or training or any. I, I'm just, I'm trying to figure out how, what's the incentive of the community involvement? Um, a lot of these people that are volunteer and they don't really have much money to start with.
So, I don't think you, I'm not gonna say you can't use it for, like, salaries or anything like that. So, I'm paying for it, but you can't put something in, I think, I think you do it in a real form. For like gas money, and what other counties might do, I think Wilson County, uh, Wilson, even if they have put money aside for them and give twenty, fifteen, whatever kind of, for gas, you know, on cause. And when it's out, it out, you know, just roll down to the next budget.
Can any fundraisers be done for that cause?
Say what?
Can any type of fundraisers be done for that cause?
Let me ask you a question, Mr. President, every year with the legislature, they always got a bill dealing with the volunteer firefighters. And they pass something, I don't even know if the governor even signed off on where, I know if, if something happened to them, that, 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 some kind of, they'll benefit. Okay, the easiest way, not the easiest way, but I don't know if we the only one doing this, but if, if, if you need something passed, I guess everybody got volunteers. Bring to us, let us take it to the association and let us take it to them up there where all the counties be fighting for the same thing. You got a better chance to getting some when you got eighty-two counties fighting for it instead of just one county. Cause when I talk to the people in other counties, they, they not having the same problem we have, I guess, I don't know.
They do have a problem with volunteers.
Oh, yeah, everybody got a problem with volunteers, nobody.
Already have that where they paying them at least gas money. You know, that's pretty much what they giving them, gas money, you know, so.
Is it legal?
Yeah, I mean, even the, uh, fire commissioner.
Okay, I tell you what you do, you, 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 I'm just one supervisor, but you give me something in writing and saying that it's legal for us to give gas money for the volunteer firefighters, I found some money.
Actually, I might need all gas money, but I find out and see what the other counties doing.
No, 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 listen what I'm saying. Give me something in writing saying that it's legal for us to give gas money to the volunteer firefighters, and I'm gonna find some money. That's all I ask.
I can talk to the secretary, I mean, uh, commissioner of fire, cause he had put it out before, and I brought it up.
I wanted him writing, where I make sure I ain't doing nothing illegal.
Going to jail either, so I'm just letting you know.
Well, anything you find out, let us know.
Okay, yeah, I'm gonna take care of the volunteers, because again, without them, the insurance and all that will go up, and citizens be paying for it then. So, gotta take care of them, because again, they can come out when other people don't wanna come out. That's all I ask.
Okay, thank you, Darren.
Alright.
Good morning, board.
Good morning.
Uh, first thing I have. Scott, did we get Ms. Wesner recorded?
What?
Ms. Wesner from Snakefly Road, did we get that recorded?
Alright, wait. That being.
It has been recorded in the being, it is recorded, thank you.
Alright. I met, uh, IMS on, uh, Jim Arlo Bridge, they get ready to start that last phase of the levy. Contractor called me a couple weeks ago, said it's some bad spots on the approach of that bridge, um, I met with, uh, Mr. Ford last Thursday, I think it was. Uh, we looked at it, he's gonna look at some more reports on it, uh, red inspections and some reports on that, but, uh, overall, I mean, if they get ready to get started, obviously no reason they couldn't start. I mean, it's eighteen Wickers Crosses every day, you know, but he's gonna look at the report, but I just wanted to bring that, because contractor contacted me, and I talked to Mr. Middleton about it, and like I said, with, uh, Mr. Ford on it, so, uh, but as of now, if they get ready to start, obviously no reason they can't start.
What, what are you studying on, right?
Well, they gonna get ready to start on that last phase of the debt, and the contractor called me about crossing Jim Arlo Bridge on the approaches, and he said they had some dips in it. So we met and looked at it, and, uh, he's gonna pull the reports and read that, but that's, uh, looking at what me and him were saying there last Thursday, I mean, it's, I'm getting twenty trucks, a whole lot of that.
Visually, I didn't see anything, so I was just looking through the green report. Cause they were showing, but, 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 so I was looking at the actual paperwork, to see if there was anything in the heart, I just wanted to run it up.
I mean, I just want to bring it forward, the contractor contacted me, you know, to do it. Uh, next thing I have, illegal dump site at one thirty-three Flipper Road, should have that.
What is that, one thirty-three?
One thirty-three Flipper.
Okay. So moved. This is, Mr. Middleton, seconded by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any needs? Motion carried.
Mr. Wilson, uh, Grove Acres, uh, IMS, if we could get the, uh, speed limit, give us a recommendation, I mean, wait in, of, uh, Grove Acres, or they.
Okay, I had a resident call about Grove Acres Road, a lot of heavy trucks going through there fast, uh, uh, and the road getting tore up. Uh, so we're gonna want to know what the specifications are for that road and speed limit and such.
What is it, Mr. President?
Grove Acres Road, it's a, come off of, they're coming off the highway at sixty-one south and, and cutting across a little road.
Um, Elgin, the contractor through, obviously gonna come forward board and everything, and so, put some stuff in place with Mr. Slover, uh, the contractor is through, it was some spots in the roads that, uh, we went out, met the contractor. And, uh, asphalt contractor too, got all the spots marked, and they are making repairs and to our road. Should have a waste tire request, uh, being reimbursed for one thousand three hundred seventy-eight dollars.
I do. Need a motion to approve the, uh, DQ permit for a, for a tire. So moved by Mr. Gaines, seconded by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion? All in favor? Any needs? Motion carried.
Our budget amendment, did you have that?
Um, Mr. Robbie Dollar has a budget amendment for the road and bridge fund, um, he's moving, um, money for young families, repairing, replacing parts, um, tires and tubes, and then for the bridge fund, it'll be for culverts.
All that's moving for culverts?
Oh, fuck it, it's, it's in the road and the bridge fund, it's on multiple accounts.
Is it a man?
Yeah, well, let me read it out, I'm sorry.
And I have a copy, and I think I put on my paperwork for Friday tomorrow.
Oh, it is here?
It's probably here right there.
Okay, I got it.
Is that what was highlighted, where it's moving from and what it's circuit, where it's going? On that, that's great, I didn't even read that.
You have, you have what?
No, no.
Was highlighted?
No, y'all might have something different.
Oh, but if you move your kind of money.
No, no, that, that's the other part, that's. No, that, that's something.
Is this it right here?
That's it, that's mine, thank you.
You might have to sign, I think.
Thank you.
Are you just gonna call them out?
I'll, I'll, yeah. I'll call them out. Uh, gonna move money from, uh, one fifty-three hundred five eighty-one, one fifty-three hundred six ninety-one, gonna move eleven thousand four hundred dollars and fourteen hundred dollars, and then book, and then put, uh, let's see. Ten thousand dollars is going to, uh, it's going to parts and repairs, and fourteen hundred is going to uniforms. And we taking it out of one fifty-three hundred five eighty-one, putting it in three hundred six ninety-one and three hundred six eighty-one. The other one, we're moving money from asphalt to parts and repairs, moving sixteen thousand there, and that's three hundred six thirty-two, three hundred six eighty-one. We moving five thousand out of three hundred six 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 to three hundred six eighty, five thousand there, and then we're moving then, out of the one sixty, three hundred five thirty-two, three hundred five seventy, three hundred five seventy-one, and three hundred five eighty-one. And we're moving the money out of those and quickly again to.
How much?
Moving five thousand one hundred twenty dollars. Okay, that's it.
Uh, you need, we need a motion for that, dude, I, I need that form, so I can sign it, I believe.
I'm gonna make a motion with some discussion. I moved, and he moved, whatever he said.
Moving funds.
Yeah.
For the road department, and that's.
I really don't have a problem.
Moved by Mr. Gray, seconded by Ms. Hutchinson's, discussion.
Thank you, Mr. President, I really don't have a problem with department heads moving money, but we at the end of our budget, and if some of this stuff could have waited till we adopt a new budget, like new clothes or whatever the case may be, that could have been in another budget, in a new budget. I don't like nobody, I don't like department heads coming in, especially when the county administrator say that give what you need and not what you want, coming in at the end of a budget, spending money that could have waited till the next budget, that's all they say.
I think he, you were moving that into the road and bridge fund?
Talking about this, clothes, I ain't talking about the need, some need to do that.
Everything went up this year when they done our budget, and we talked to them when we done budgets, and everything increased, and that's what that was, and we buy our uniforms, like the maintenance shop gets it, this one, then we go to the next shop, and next shop, and next, you know, so that's how we spread them out, that's what we get there, uniform, that's in their deal, you know, when we hire them, but, yeah. Alright, oh.
We had carried the motion.
Sorry, uh, got involved in what, what else we were doing there? Uh, alright, all in favor? Uh, any needs? Motion carried. Go ahead, Robby.
Okay, the next item was that other sheet you had, then, Mr. Gray, that I just put it there, y'all will look over that. That will be the end of the draw of the money for the pushing shell in the winter storm. We'll get the federal money within the next month, and then we'll get the state right after that, that'll be all of them.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Uh, I don't know if, probably before the, uh, new county administrator, the commander here, uh, we did get money out of a fund to pay for this, so, uh, my recommendation is that money going back into the same fund that we got the money from, right?
Do we have to make a motion to approve?
It's just coming in, he's letting you know.
Oh, we, okay.
Yeah, I'm just saying, when we get it in, send it back to the same fund we borrowed it from.
Can I ask a question?
Definitely.
Go ahead.
So we got the other additional money, but we, we don't got it all?
We got everything, we got everything. Highlighted, uh, one that's highlighted, uh, for federal, should be this month, and the other should be like next month, the state, the sixteen, the state, and then the bottom that's highlighted would be the, that's the total amount we have received.
See, okay, sounds right.
Yeah. Alright, Scott, we went out and looked at a lot of those lots, that was, did you, okay?
Yes, sir.
Over half of those lots that I brought up last, and we, we cannot get on them with a tractor or anything, it's just not up front. So I guess we need to look coming into this year, we're gonna do those lots and looking into them all, and we did, you know, we have one weed acre, we have two, one literally, and one north, but another weed acre, but, a zero term board, and then like I said, I did talk to the sheriff department, uh, last meeting, they said they would be willing to, yeah, do that, so I guess we can still discuss and follow up to them. On, you know, how much they can do to help us, uh, cut up lots, you know, sheriff's here last meeting, to, to, you know.
Uh, Mr. President?
Yes.
Uh, Shane, y'all, uh, I know y'all gonna assist, uh, but I'm just gonna make this statement because, uh, properties really have got out of control, uh, city and the county, I mean, you got grass growed up all over these properties, and I understand how the process go, but, uh, if, if the inmates, uh, or the trustees or whatever gonna assist us with our road department, there's one.
if the, if the inmates, uh, or the trustees or whatever gonna assist us with our road department, there's one thing, but, man, I don't know where y'all be living, man, the places I be going, these properties are straight out of control. We need to get a plan to deal with these properties, because I'm getting calls all the time, and when I go by that, I really can't even believe the grass is covering some of these houses. And it should, people shouldn't have to live next door to, uh, somebody that got property that have grown up over their house. Now, ain't never been the type to make excuses, talking about, well, we don't have personnel, we don't have this. At the end of the day, those people pay taxes, and if, if we don't have the proper personnel to do it, then maybe we need to bid it out to a private contractor, but it need to be done. I, I mean, anybody else got any other suggestion, man, 'cause this, this just ridiculous. I don't wanna go out like the city, I don't wanna say, well, we don't have this and we don't have that. I ain't never, I'm not gonna make no excuse, we need to get it done.
This is crazy, this is like I've got every phone I get up, this is right in front of my house, I, I'm sorry to speak out of turn, but the people's property by the property.
Let, let me ask you, but is that someone's property, or it's just a, a lot?
It's a house.
It's a house.
It's a house.
It's just.
You can't see that house, but no man, but this, this has been bought most three years, so this is, everything happens at this here.
What is the address of the lot?
One hundred and twelve, sorry.
Probably is asking for some equipment.
I thought we did all that.
Of them?
Yeah, when, then we cut off the.
All done to get them cut, like I said, you can't get tractors up in that, most of these yards, you cannot get them big tractors in there.
But we did the front yard and got the backyard, that's right.
But this, I mean, it's back up, it's.
So there, there's a, we made motions.
I thought we just cut that.
No, what he's saying, we made motions to do it, but he's saying.
But I can't get them big tractors in, in a lot of these yards, and that's what I'm saying, now, I can't get a lot of them in the fronts to the back to, you know, and that's what we discussed in last meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, they know it's in the mower.
It's like saying, it's equipment, uh, keep doing it.
The road department, my opinion, excuse me, the road needs, needs a mower.
Yeah.
Well, you need to put it in the budget, you know.
And that's what I was asking.
There's gonna be a rush.
You know, I've checked on prices, I'm gonna go to contract stuff just to see if it is, and if it is, I'm pulling that down state contract. So if it is that right, I can get a person, get her to do it, but it is, pull it down contract.
Yeah, 'cause then you start getting snakes and running, the snakes are there, 'cause there rats there, mice and, uh, and they. I, he's, you know, speaking on that, Ricky, I've seen more houses in the last month, growing up vines all over them, and, and there are people living in some of these houses, and, and it's, uh, I don't know if there's, you know, elderly people that can't get out in the heat, or, or, or what it is, but.
Mr. President, here, here, here go what I'm facing. You got abandoned houses, you got senior citizens living next to some of these houses. In the area I'm living in, you got people going in and out of these houses, you don't know what they hiding in there, whether they hiding drugs, whether they hiding guns, whether they hiding whatever in these abandoned houses, and it, it, it need to be taken care of, that's dangerous.
Uh, but that, but it just has to be documented, and the only way we can do it is, it has to come before the board, and we have to go through those hearings, 'cause if we own somebody's property and cut their grass, or something, uh, and, and the city's got the same problem, they're gonna fuck the house, the city.
You ready for additional equipment to keep on doing it?
Well, I'll put it in next year, but like I said, I'll take the sheriff department and get a list of ones that we can't cut with contractors, and then get with him and see when he can do them, you know.
Okay.
Help us out with doing them, and then like I said, I did go as far as to check, see if it was equipment on state contract, and if it is, it is on state contract.
Now, I'll see if that's a public work for an inmate to do. It may not be.
Anything we need to do at this time about that, we'll present it to the chair.
He's saying he wants equipment, so he's gotta make an offer, figure out what he needs and.
Okay, you'll submit that?
I will.
Okay.
Get with her.
Okay.
All right, the last thing I have is, uh, Scotland Drive, uh, you know, we had an engineer draw some plans, and, you know, uh, put out some bids, and put out three, uh, get bids, we received two for Scotland Drive, uh, one being from, uh, G Raven Construction, of a sum of forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars, the other being from Dozer, one hundred and forty-two thousand ninety-eight dollars and forty-four cents.
Is this, uh, one of those jobs that we just started, we're gonna make them guaranteed, or have a warranty?
It's a year guarantee behind these, with this, we put a year guarantee, once they complete the work, uh, it is a year guarantee behind this, an E W P, right if it fail, uh, but like I said, we put it out, uh, no contractors that picked up a package, didn't bid on it, reached out to it, but it just didn't happen, it was it. So these were the two that we, we received, like I said, one from G Raven for forty-eight thousand five hundred, other from Dozer for one hundred and forty-two thousand ninety-eight dollars and forty-four cents. We, we a year warranty, if the board decides that it worked.
Do we need to make a motion on that, or we just take it under advisement, Scott?
I'm sure.
Ready to accept the, the lowest bid, but I need to figure out where I don't have forty-two, forty-eight thousand dollars in my budget to.
Yeah.
Do that repair work.
Yeah, so we gotta find out where the money comes from.
Take it under advisement?
Yeah.
Is your low getting heavier all the time over there?
Yeah.
Explain to me what you said, they trying to get some contractual work.
Say it again.
B W P on the college, but I, you got forty-eight thousand, another for one hundred and seven.
It's a.
Pay on the E W P.
Yeah.
Mr. President, why they figuring it out, that, now, I overheard some stuff, I don't usually repeat stuff that I over hear, but I'm gonna say this, and, 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 and Robert might laugh, and Warren might laugh, but we gonna look at it and get it in writing anyway, so this is what I want you to do, uh, Mr. Rowan.
Yes, sir.
And, and the engineer, uh, now, when we get these E W Ps and we have a match, find out that since we don't have no money, can we recommend that they pay for the whole project, and we won't have to match nothing? Could you find that out for me, please?
Who paid for it?
Son of Warren.
Did ever do any of that?
That, that, uh, saw.
Son of Warren, I was like.
Yeah.
Not gonna do.
No, 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 let's get this straight, get it in writing.
I've got it in writing. I've got it in writing, and I'm presenting it to Mr. Gaines, and Mr. Gaines has sent it to our own, and we haven't heard anything.
Somebody told me.
I understand, but where, where you, somebody told you, that's where it does went, and we hadn't heard anything back from.
Okay, somebody told me. Yeah, you can apply for E W P, if it don't have the matching funds, you can ask for them to do something, and they might fund the whole project.
Like a waiver? Run a waiver?
Yes, we gonna say waiver, we gonna put it as a waiver.
We did get three, I think, can I, can, that they done a hundred, I think it's three or four that they're gonna do a hundred percent, but what it did, it fell on that rolling four, when that disaster happened there, and we just have to follow under that, and I think that's how they will match a hundred percent.
No, I like a paper trail.
I understand, but I'm.
Get it in writing, 'cause I don't want us to be paying something, and we could've been asking for something else and getting, getting the whole project funded.
Mr. President, go ahead, Mr. President.
Uh, Super Gray, um, I, I, I have. Yeah, okay, well, I did, uh, I have, but I have, uh, got the information when I heard it, I did get the information, I did get all of the eighty-twenty match information that came from U S D A, and I have passed it on up, I just hadn't heard anything, yeah, that's why I hadn't brought it back up.
What's moving up, Shane?
Appreciate it, Super, I haven't heard it, they already told me, I mean, the ones that we gotta ask for, if you don't ask for it, you sure ain't got it. So we asking for one hundred percent match, funding, with no match.
Mr. Sergeant, you got your information on the other?
I did, I passed it on up to.
And we didn't got it.
I signed up change.
Thank you.
Believe me, it's done.
Robbie, that particular project, is, is that on, some of that's on private property we gonna be working on?
Scott, all of it.
And, and the landowner has no responsibility whatsoever?
You know, we went through this before, Kevin, I think, over this calendar, Grace said earlier, you know, uh, you know, the city wanna do for the rights, the city does the E W Ps, and they put the match money up, the city don't guarantee on the lot.
They must start that after I left, 'cause the one I did when I was over there, they got the, they got the pad and maintenance on, so they must start something.
They started something new, I talked to Scott about this several times, uh, I talked to, well, when we went to Weston, somewhere, I talked to, uh, N R C S invited up there, and, and we don't have the people, so I like what we did.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
Let me speak on that, back in the days when I was with the city, we ain't never had people coming back and saying their project was failing like they doing now. People doing E W P projects where they last a year and one month, and after the, the year and one month over it, they know we responsible for it, so we, we gonna have to get better work done on any project if, if we not gonna go back and do something to help these people.
But the N R C S to tell you, Mr. Gray, when they come out and go, this is not perfect. This is a band-aid.
Well, all the band-aids that they had back in the day, they were working, these band-aids not working.
I understand, so I think that's the reason, cause of these projects has gone down, or the money that you can actually, you know, if you need two hundred thousand, they don't give you but a hundred, I mean, you know what I'm saying, so they're putting a band-aid on, but then a year or two, it fails, and now it's counting on.
Mr. President, you see what he just said, when we go lobbying for a project that's worth two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, they reward us two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but it take a year for us to get the money. Now, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar project has turned into a four hundred, a five hundred thousand dollar project, so they try to design it with the money that they have, I'm not blaming the contract, they doing what they can do, but we need to ask for more money where they can design the project right, still trying to design it to the money that they have.
Uh, yeah, if, you know, what I was thinking is, i- if I had something cost one of my piece of property, I, I'm pretty sure everybody expect me to pay for it, if I, if you're able to, I mean, some, I know some landowners can't, but, uh, we keep doing these same projects on them, end up, most of it's the same private property, and I don't know how that's accounting liability, but.
But I saw like that, but Mr. Gray, we get everything for you in writing.
Yes, sir, I got one, I got one thing I need you to check on, Mr. President, I got one thing I need you to check on. One twenty-seven Steam Plant Road. Last week, I got a call, and check that lady mailbox out, please. Thanks, sir.
Did you have something?
Yes, I do, uh, Robbie, I just, I'll give it to you, Robinson Lane had potholes, um, the end of Geller Road has some potholes, I got a driveway steam, steam plant, um, you know, the first driveway after you come, uh, cross the bridge, I mean, coming back up steam plant from the dump, the one to the left cross from Bluegrass, the guy that grew up on here got the iron gate right there, but right before you get to Giant West.
Where?
Not, not west, it's the driveway before you get to Giant.
Okay.
Uh, they fixed the cover there or something, he said, pull up a little asphalt, they just, maybe put some concrete, look at that, and I did wanna check on, uh, I don't know if this is for you or Scott, on that three point nine, uh, Southmore Drive, uh, is the time to expire for us to clean it up, or where we at, on that property? Yeah, I was, this game on camera. You know, the, the, the one we declared, it's about a month ago, across from this, uh,
Same Scott.
Fortune, right there, that we declared, uh.
Oh, right next to this.
What's, what's his address?
Yeah.
What's his address?
I think it's three twenty-nine, Scott.
I think we adjudicated that.
We did adjudicate, and we did, uh, I was trying to move around here, but, uh, 'cause I, 'cause I got another call about it.
Is that one of the houses you couldn't?
Yeah, I, I mean, I get rid of them all, 'cause like, some of them we haven't even got started, to be honest.
Yeah.
We rode around and I had Alvin looking all up on them, tell me which ones we can get to, which one we can't, and I don't have a list with me, you know.
Yeah, I'm just trying to make sure, okay, so, yeah, and, uh, so whenever you get, uh, opportunity, you know, just let me know, and, uh, I'll, I'll get back, hook, I received a call over the weekend checking on it, and I know it's something I'm forgetting, uh, it's definitely something I'm forgetting, and I'll let you know, uh, what it is, 'cause I got a long list, I went Revival all last weekend, all last weekend, I got something, every day that weekend, over the weekend, when that went out, I got something else.
That Robb see you there with.
Right there, yeah. So I, I, I'll let you know.
Okay.
He got it in Revival, I got it in film.
Come on.
I get it from.
All right, moving on.
Good morning, board, you know, we, uh, just have two items, um, SAP O one ten and O M, that's a tractor motor project for Kingston Road, Slow Wilville Road and on the road, we have a contract back from the contractor, we just need, uh, board authorization by the president to sign the contract, so that I can submit it to T A.
Still move.
Moved by Mr. Gaines.
Sir.
Second by Mr. Middleton, any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any names? Most approved.
And my last item is Mortgage on Road, we did submit the contract to the contractor, um, he was trying to get it to me on Friday, so I'm just gonna get it to me first this week, and I'll be submitting that to Mr. Johnston to have signatures on it, so that we can move forward with that.
Thank you, Jesus.
Thank you.
All right.
Are there any questions for me while I'm here?
Three, three, three twenty now.
Good night, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good morning, Ray, County Summit, um, medical, just wanted to request to speak with the board to get some updates on Concorde and personal issue.
I got it.
Okay, all right. Ms. Price, did you have a travel voucher that you needed or what? Does she need to get this approved? I'm sorry. Oh, okay.
Good morning, board, just have a couple things for you, uh, there's trash report for the month, District one, thirteen bags, District ten twenty, District three thirty-five, District four fourteen, to District five fourteen. There was two hundred point five bags taken out of the sheriff's office, fifty-three out of the courthouse, six out of Justice Four, and thirty-three out of the San Jose Department. Uh, I have a couple of budget amendments, you have those? Um, the first one is for the jail, uh, we'd like to move ten thousand, uh, from contractual services into custodial, uh, cleaning supplies. So that would be moved from zero zero one two two oh five eight one into zero zero one two two oh six four five. We're also requesting.
Yeah, I mean, it's negative, so, twenty-seven hundred bucks.
You need to transfer ten thousand from, uh, to, from where to where?
From contract, this is for the jail, from contractual services to custodial cleaning supplies.
Yeah, that is. You already hit a hundred percent on five eight one.
We're showing five hundred and thirteen, so, zero zero one two two oh five eight one.
I can print the screen for you.
Okay.
We're just looking at that.
Is there some, the only thing I think of, what was the pay? Is there some, the only thing I think of, what was the payment for the jail coming out of Tuck and Correa, that must've hit after last time, or whenever we submitted this, from this water?
Several of them hit.
Okay, so that, so whenever we submitted this, um,
That one have been in? That one have been submitted yet? Okay, now you can't use that line item.
Okay, so, well, we will come back to you, it was in there, I guess it's not now, so, uh, we'll come back to you on that, but we are definitely have to move some money into cleaning supplies.
We're having good money in there to pay the remaining year.
Right.
Do you need exactly ten thousand?
Uh, that is what Ms. Wilkes and Chief Service, she sat down and discussed what it would take to finish the year out.
Yeah, we gotta finish the year with contractual services.
Mr. President.
That's a bigger question.
Yeah.
When you say clean, I mean, finish the year, are you talking about this budget year?
Yes, budget year.
You're talking about August of September?
So, yes, ma'am, so whenever, whenever this was handed to Ms. Washington, there was over five hundred contractual services, so being in the negative, this.
Who's cleaning the jail, is it?
There's still bills outstanding.
The, the, uh, we have to supply all the supplies, even for the cleaning company that the county is contracted with, we start to pay for all the cleaning supplies.
Okay, so that's for the whole county, is that just for the jail or for, is that just for the jail?
That's for the jail, yes, ma'am. And Chief, so obviously, this is not gonna happen today regardless, so Chief Service, you can come back and explain a little bit more at the next board meeting.
Let me ask you a question, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Do you have enough to carry you to the next board meeting?
We know we have, we have more than enough, we, we will make it happen, we will make, make do.
We don't want you to be over there done.
He, he's asking, do you have enough cleaning supplies to get you to the next board?
I can't, I can't answer that, cause I'm not over the jail, uh, supervisor, I, well, it is what it is, I mean, it's, obviously, we can't make that transfer, so.
Well, I don't think I'm, Mr. President, I don't think I'm gonna advise you to do it this, you go back and talk to your jail administrator, that he figured that he can't make it to, where the next board meeting?
Nineteen.
Nineteen or whatever the cop, we might have to call special board meeting to get some, whatever, what you need over there, cause you gotta clean the jail.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I got a question for you, you too?
No, sorry, I have.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Uh, the other budget amendment we're asking for is zero zero one two hundred eight one eight, which is other mobile equipment. We're asking to move a thousand or ten thousand into telephone, which is zero zero one two hundred eight oh two. The reason for that uptick is, this is now where we're paying for the trackers on all of the vehicles, we were, uh, cause it's listed under AT and T, who the, who the cell service provider is for the, uh, trackers, so we're asking for ten thousand to be moved over into that line. And the last one is, Canine Supplies, we're asking for a thousand dollars from repairs to radio equipment, zero zero one two two one four four six, moved into Canine Supplies, zero zero one two two one six two five, and that's just an amount of a thousand dollars.
Are those okay, what he just gave you, the transfer? Cause we, we need a motion to.
Do you have any money in those accounts? Cause I was gonna make a motion pending.
We can do that.
I make a motion to, uh, what that number was?
Which one?
The last couple ones you made. Pending funds available, I'm gonna make the motion.
That one thousand dollars into Canine, and ten thousand into telephone.
Pending funds available.
Motion from Mr. Gray, seconded by Mr. Hutton. Any more discussion? All in favor? Uh, any names? Motion carried.
That's all I have from the Board, if there's any questions.
Mr. President, I don't really have a question, but I got a call from, oh, this bitch over here, three twenty East Eastmore Drive, and, I don't know, man, ladies say they got a vicious dog over there.
Excuse me, Mr. President, they didn't take care, took care of it, took care, it was taken care of, before she called.
Thank you, sir, I'm good. Oh, oh, Ms. Chan?
Yes, sir.
When is night out?
Uh, Karen has one, she got another in talks, uh, election, as soon as, as soon as they set, go complete election, I guess, I, she's there, Robert.
You take those, sir?
Any other departmental reports?
Go ahead, Chairman.
Well, uh, good morning, well, almost, almost a good afternoon, aren't we? Uh, but, uh, just wanted to remind you that the work is done, out of, and writing a paper on that, and it's, uh, they started to clean up, uh, portion of the, uh, portion of the site, and, uh, it's going along real well, I wanted to, uh, want to thank the county, too, they had a big, uh, site visit this, uh, this past week, and, uh, actually before last, and, and, uh, the work that went on, and, to clean it up, and make it a little more presentable, was well received by the client, and just a, uh, a thank you to, to all those that, that participated and helped, and got that, uh, got that in a little more presentable shape there, and thank you. Also, uh, we are gonna submit, uh, N B A grant, uh, kinda like we did last time for the, uh, levy work on it, to, to pick up and clean up the remaining portion of I P, uh, just in, just in the event that something, uh, something else shakes, so, we'll probably submit somewhere in the neighborhood about a million to me and the half, I'm waiting on, on estimates and stuff, right now, for, uh, for that, so, uh, but it will include, uh, it will include the remaining, uh, the remaining property and cleanup on that. Our goal, uh, is to get it back down to ground level across the entire property, where we can, uh, maintain and mow it, and, uh, get all the debris and everything out of there, so, uh, it's, it's coming along. The other thing I did know, which y'all wanted to do, I wanted to congratulate, um, the Board, uh, on, uh, you know, we completed and awarded the, um, the Lenti project, which is the culmination of the total of about six point three million dollars that, that we've got, um, for the, for the county over the, of the year with no back, so it's been six point three million dollars, put it down on the ground, and finding another million here, and another million there, and, and, uh, bringing it, uh, bringing it all together to close that, we, we have finished, uh, that project, and, uh, and we wanna thank one of our clients and prospects for closing that gap, too, uh, they, they participated not to the ten, with about one point two million dollars, uh, in those, in those funds, and that is not, uh, is not a small amount of money, uh, for anybody, and probably one of the first times that, I think in my career, I've seen where, you know, a company, a prospect, I guess, has contributed towards the infrastructure, uh, infrastructure development of the site prior to them actually, uh, pulling the trigger and completing the project, so, uh, but, the, uh, the site itself has been awarded, they did a little bit of preliminary work that they could do out there, they did, uh, they did have to reapply for the construction stormwater department out there, cause it was, it had expired, um, from the, from previous project, and so they're expected to kinda get back after it for the next couple of weeks, whenever that, uh, stormwater department is, uh, is, is given, so, uh, it's a two hundred and seventy day contract, and, and so I do wanna do, um, either, you know, a ribbon cutting, groundbreaking, and and it seems appropriate that we do it in front of the, uh, of the, of the completion, as they're, as they're starting right now, instead of at the end, because of the property's under option, and so, uh, anticipation of, of doing that. Um, I will say that property, for, for all practical purposes, you know, it's, uh, I think it's net generated, the county, about, in addition to the, to the levy money, about one point two million dollars over the last, uh, over the last, uh, five, five years, and, um, and so, we're, uh, we're definitely, uh, looking forward to getting that property, uh, completed, you know, that, so, I, if it's the Boards, uh, we, we'll go ahead, we'll wanna do it within the next couple of weeks, like a, I don't know what you call it, I guess, a kickoff ceremony for the final phase, or something along those lines, where we'll, I guess, we can throw some dirt, if you wanna throw some dirt, or ribbon cut, or whatever, we'll, we'll figure something out, but it is appropriate, it's a big project, that it's, you know, like I said, six point three million dollar project, that's, uh, coming to completion, and, uh, and excited about, uh, excited about it, finishing it. Only other thing that, that I know that's out, that, uh, and I do, if, uh, if the Board desires, or wants to have, uh, to, we do have three, uh, three projects we can discuss, that, in executive session, that, uh, regarding the, uh, regarding their updates, if y'all wanna do that, if y'all wanna do that at this meeting. Uh, but, uh, the other item that's out is on the, uh, we did work with the, uh, Port, uh, and submitted a, a grant to the E P A for, uh, kind of its, under their zero emission port, uh, grant program, uh, and trying to, uh, trying to do that, it's a big, big ask, it was somewhere like twenty-five, twenty-eight million dollar request, but working with Anthony and everybody, gotta get that, uh, gotta get that done, so, uh, we, we don't expect to hear anything back until January, and, and hopefully, uh, keep your fingers crossed, we can, we can be successful, uh, with that, with that project as well, but, uh, I can answer any questions we got, and, and I don't know, uh, Scott, do y'all want, do y'all want an update on project updates in executive session, I, two of them I know, I'm I'm under N B A, and, you know, wait till the evening.
Any more departmental reports?
Anthony, you want to discuss for you today?
Yeah, I've got, you wanna discuss it?
I can, excuse me.
U S, U S D A, um, sent out a memo, dated July eleventh, on Beaver Control Program for the county. They state, we are ready to begin the county enrollment process, this program will run from October the first, twenty twenty-four, through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. The cost will be seven five hundred dollars per county, uh, if you wish to enroll your county, please contact Ms. Brenna Story, and she will, in turn, send the paperwork necessary to enroll the county. That's the best, that's the grant, I was just telling you all about, I just sent her, that was a Beaver Control Grant, so we do have Beaver problems.
We have to bust them all the time, a little delayed right there, before you get to the shop there, we say about every two months, you have to bust it down.
And also, over there on Deerfield, we have Beaver problems, yeah.
And then, like I said, I don't know if the airport, if that, on that airport, that's what stops it, uh, the Beaver Control right there.
I wanna make a motion that we apply for that grant.
Seconded. Okay. Moved by Mr. Hutton, seconded by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any names? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more departmental reports? All right, public comments? Anybody here for a public comment? All right, over on the table, Mr. Gray.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, uh, I, I, I kinda skipped over this during the, uh, minutes, I wasn't really here, and I was on the phone, and I had some, I know y'all was here, but I had some concerns about, um, U Court raises, and I read the minutes, and I really couldn't understand it, so, uh, Scott, you gonna help me out with that, or look into it and get back with me on that?
Yeah, put that email, check it out.
Okay, cause they got raises in here with no amount, so that could be, I don't know what, and, and I did approve it, so I like, I would like to know what I approved, uh. Everywhere I go now, uh, I'm seeing more and more masks, people wearing masks around here, so evidently, I guess, we gotta hike in something, I'm not gonna say COVID, but I know it's something, because, I mean, everywhere I go now, people wearing masks, and, uh, I don't have mask on, my mama ain't say nothing about my mask, so, just be careful out there, uh, I got a long list, but, uh, Scott, I want you to, I'm gonna give Supervisor Hutchins a job, and it's no pay, and I wanna make a motion that we do a, a resolution, uh, recognizing Ms. Georgia Oliver, and all the information is in here, all right, my, all right, my, my, uh, y'all get together, and whatever she wanna bring out of there for that resolution, and, and bring it back to the Board, that's a motion.
Seconded. All right, motion by Mr. Gray, seconded by Mr. Gaines, any discussion? Okay, we're seeing the second. In this session, you're gonna make a second, okay, any discussion? All in favor? Any names?
She ain't teach you here. Did she your teacher?
What was her name?
Ms. Georgia Oliver.
I don't think, you know what, now that you say that, I think maybe I did have her, where did she teach at?
She was on y'all's side there.
Was she at, Susan B. West or?
He say she was at, he say she was at Southman.
I did one, one, one here.
Yeah, she was in Martin Miller, and Mr. Oliver called him there, too, though, didn't he?
We didn't have her.
Yeah, Mr. Oliver called her.
We did.
We did not have her.
I didn't need the job, we missed out on awesome great, not only teacher, but individual, man, I mean, uh, next, I got, I'm gonna try to get through this as fast as possible, but I ain't, I ain't got that much, but I do have a vitriol report, and, and y'all is bad with me, cause these people are leaving here, and these people from Nashville, and, uh, the Olivers, the Marys, my seventy gold doctor, the Olivers, the Marys, the Reed, the Clark, the Davis, and the Dobbins, the Clacks, the Collins, Sanders, Carter, Brineal, Baker, Mary, Bates, and, uh, former Congresswoman Sheila Jackson Lee, uh, passed away, and I, I, I know her, and, uh, she was truly a warrior, and, uh, she, uh, fought for her people in Houston, Texas, uh, she, she was, uh, I think was over hood, she dealt, uh, to Congress, and, and they were punishing her over hood. So that's gonna be a great loss, uh, not only to, uh, Texas, but to, to, to the entire United States, because, I mean, hood mean a lot to a lot of people, and, uh, I don't know, man, I just saw this Sonya Massing thing, uh, I just pray that, I know we give out our law enforcement officers all the training that they need, but I just pray that nothing like that ever happened around here, what I saw on TV that happened to, uh, Sonya Massing, cause I, I just can't imagine nobody getting killed because they took a, 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 a pot of water, uh, off the stove, and, and you getting shot at like that, that's just as crazy as. and, and you getting shot at like that, that's just as crazy as anything I ever seen in my life. And I just want to say this to our board and, uh, they got a lot of stuff going on in this country. And I just believe, you know, some of the things that's going on, we can change. And it don't affect us, it affect us, but it don't affect us. So I just would like for us to kind of like stay focused on what's going to affect Adams County, Nashville and Adams County. And, uh, I mean, uh, I don't see no problem we have, we don't agree on everything, but, you know, it, it don't get to the point where we don't like each other. I mean, all of us like each other, we just don't agree on everything. And I think we work real good together, but, I mean, that's just in my opinion, you know. You don't like me, I don't know, you missing out on a good guy, that's all I can tell you. And that includes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Second.
All right, I kind of took care of a couple of things, but I do have a couple more. Um, I need to get travel approved for the MAS Board of Directors meeting September the twelfth or fifteenth.
So move.
All right, I've got to take four right here. Moved by Mr. Gray, seconded by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any names? Motion carried.
And the next thing I want to say is, on Saturday, we had a back-to-school dash and it was a great turnout. We had over probably two hundred kids to attend the dash. They gave away free hot dogs and, we gave away free hot dogs and chips and drinks. And, um, they had fun out there and we're just glad to see that we could help some kids that was needing the school supply. So it was a group of us that did it and it was a great turnout and, uh.
About two thousand extra?
Yes.
Where was it?
It was at Safe Room.
Okay, I, I got a couple checked this morning and, uh, please ask Angela Dooshy if she have any more school supplies. Y'all must did a great job because they, they called and asked for most supplies.
Yeah, we had, we had a great time, we had over two hundred kids show up and had a great turnout. And, uh, Gray is gone, but I just wanted to thank him because he came out and grilled the hot dogs for me and everything. So I just wanted to thank him also for that. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Sutcliffe.
All right, well, I first start off with, I said thank, I want to do a project and not anything big, but I want to make an announcement to the rest of the board here because somehow many of the people on camera and people see, uh, previously earlier today when Supervisor Hutchins was talking, we just had a mix-up, I was trying to get Kevin's attention and she thought I was going to cut off and I know how it came out and I apologized in the air and tell her that what meant I did, but I'm going to publicly say it and I'm saying it to the rest of the board. You know, you responsible for your character and piggybacking on what Supervisor Gray said, we all here and we all have bumps and bruises, but we do work pretty good with each other. And I respect each and every member on this board. So if it was on my part that bothered me that I feel like I was out of character, I'm mad enough to apologize and I don't misunderstand it, uh, on camera, if I did it on camera, I'm responsible for that. So and I would also know, you know, I've been president and I don't, I'm, I, I'm not looking to be president, but it took and, it, it sure took a lot out of me because sometimes I'd be talking and I'm used to saying stuff, but I'm definitely going to try to, if you hear me saying something, I'm really trying to get Supervisor, I mean, President Wilson's attention, I'm not going to cut anybody off, I'm going to do, I'm going to allow everybody to talk. And I think everybody gave me the same respect and I think we respect each other, so I want to do that first. So we have had, so we have had it cleared up. And so on the other thing that I don't like to say anything, I don't like to stir the pot, but I know this might stir the pot and I'm not trying to do it and it has nothing to do with that. And I hope the newspaper don't take this wrong, but I read two articles in the paper about Morgantown Road and I didn't see a lot about supervisors in there, but I do want the constituents to know that, uh, we had, uh, two supervisors as well as the rest of this board supporter of Morgantown and spent like twenty, I want to say twenty-two years. And I want to thank this board for working together to try to get those people out there some relief. And I just don't, I want the constituents to know, and I, and don't get me wrong, not anything, I thank the mayor and the city and the board of aldermen for working with us, but your supervisor was doing work as well. It was a joint effort that we did do it, I want to thank the engineer, I cannot leave our road manager out, uh, Robbie Dollar, because if we had, we have had a lot of the numbers, he had worked hard, we went planning. So it was a joint effort between the city and the county and we are representing those people out there in Morgantown. And I just don't want our work efforts as a county board to be looked over for people to think, say, well, you know, only, well, if it wasn't for the city, Morgantown Road wouldn't have gotten done because then it was, it's very misleading. The county has worked hard, these other board members, even though they are not represented in the area, every time we needed extra money for it, uh, they came up and they voted with us. Kevin goes to church out there, so he here, Wes have people out there, Anthony also. So it has been a collaborative effort to get Morgantown Road and I appreciate everybody for what they did. And, uh, so, and lastly, another thing Supervisor Gray said, we do understand this election year. We already seen the things that happened. We responsible for our community, how we act and how we show ourselves, people, if you don't think so, people recognize them, people realize that we responsible also for keeping our community together. And I would, you know, ask us, and we do it well anyway, just to be careful, um, in this election year, everybody has the right to vote for the candidate of their choice. And you have the right. And you, and I'm not saying that you're not, and I'm not saying people won't, but with me, regardless of who I vote for, I would not, um, kill the character of anybody else. And, uh, because we all humans and we all got to live here in this community. And I would, I would hate for something national to tear our community up because what happens in our community affects us more than anything. So that's still with everything else, everybody's responsible for your own character. And I, uh, yield the floor to Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Gaines.
Yeah, I just, in reference to what Chandler was talking about with the road department, what they did for the site visit, I just want to thank Robbie and his crew. You only get one chance to make the first impression and, uh, what they did out there, I appreciate it. I know the rest of the board is as well. Um, the only other thing I would like to say, I might keep the Racker family in our prayers, a big family here in town. Their son passed away.
Who is that?
Lee Friday Wade Racker. Forty-three years old unexpectedly and he leaves behind a wife and three small children. It's just a terrible situation.
Thank you, Ms. Middleton. Ms. Dean, do you have anything for her?
Um, the only thing I have is to spread across the minutes the, um, insurance policy for St. Catherine Creek.
Okay. I need a motion. Ms. Sutcliffe, seconded by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion through. Is that all? Okay. Ms. Lewis?
Okay, I have a couple of items. Um, I have travel for Paige to Jackson to obtain some documentation that she's needing concerning St. Catherine Creek Utility Authority that will be on September ninth. Um, and just need to have that before, please.
Need a motion?
So move. Set.
Moved by Ms. Sutcliffe, seconded by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? Any negatives? No, okay. Motion through.
You try to get rid of your face.
You need to sign that.
We, uh, need to have the bond renewals for Robbie Dollar, Tim Chapman and Donna Johnson's. Spread across the minutes, please.
So move. Set.
Moved by Mr. Gaines, seconded by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carried.
We are, the recreation account was at Home Bank, it's set up by the commission there. And now that kind of all that's been resolved and we all had the meeting with the city, we're going, um, I've seen permission to move the recreation funds over to our county depository from Coria Bank. And they just needed a motion from the board so that we can get certification of that. So.
Set.
Moved by Ms. Hutchins, seconded by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carried.
Um, we have another unclaimed body, so, uh, need to, we're going to go ahead and post that starting today. Um, and just need to have approval from the board to spread across the minutes the cremation form once we have done the posting. And then, uh, there is going to be a five hundred dollar charge, which is the standard charge that we have for that to Riverwood. Just need to have the payment as a proof, please.
So move.
Moved by Ms. Gaines.
Set.
Seconded by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? Any? Motion through.
We submitted, or the board submitted, um, for, it's one piece of property, we got two responses back on one of the homestead charge backs, it was on an Elsa Carter at one oh two Oakland. She made her objection, we forwarded that on to the Department of Revenue and they said, uh, there were two bases which did not allow for her homestead to be still in place and that was because her, she or her spouse were claiming homes it somewhere else and they also did not refile their application. So just need a motion from the board if they want to agree with what the Department of Revenue said, which is generally what the board does.
All right, need a motion? Moved by Ms. Hutchins, seconded by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion through.
Need to have the mail tracking report to the sheriff's office for July twenty twenty-four, spread across the minutes.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Gaines. Seconded by Ms. Sutcliffe. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carried.
Um, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Slover?
There's a clash act, class action lawsuit, the Kroger settlement that we need to get approved. Particularly how much money we'll get, probably be within the tens of thousands, not the hundreds of thousands. But, you know, that's money that we weren't expecting, so that's good.
Okay, you need a motion?
Yes, sir.
So move. Set.
Moved by Ms. Hutchins, seconded by Mr. Gray.
Where, where does this go?
The opioid lawsuits that states and counties across the nation have been suing for people providing opioids.
All in favor? Any names? Motion carried.
Uh, the, that's an e-signature, Kevin, so we'll get together and get that e-signature in so they can, they can accept it. On the Bellwether Levy project case four, our engineer has submitted a pay request with a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars worth of the work, according to our agreement with the person. It's got an option on there, it's going to be a breakdown, a sixty forty split of cost. Uh, I'm going to submit this over to the vendor for their approval, I've a vendor, the optioner, for their approval as well, but I need approval to submit this to the community.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Gaines, seconded by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion?
If we get these in the future, I'd like them to go ahead and get sent to me when they're received. I don't know if you opened this or it was opened by Corvette. I always Corvette, just go ahead and send it to me before it is and I'll shoot it. And then it probably likes more paperwork, but, and we'll make sure that we also kind of keep an eye on it when things are happening like those do.
All in favor? Any names? Motion carried.
Uh, we got an attorney general's opinion back allowing us to enact what's called an ordinance for indexing instructions and it's a little bit surprising. Usually the attorney generals have the opinion that if there is general legislation on something, the counties can't put in little bitty gap fillers, so to speak. But the new general, new attorney general has said that that is in fact allowed unless they specifically said we didn't control. So it's a little bit of deviation. Right now, we only do sectionals here in Adams County, so the statute really doesn't help us when it comes to indexing, pull up documents. So what the chain street clerk has asked, and I can actually kind of understand why she's asking it, when I do title searches, it's the same thing, is that we would require by ordinance that not only do the, uh, they put the statutory requirement sectionals, which is not useful for us, but that they would also put a PPI in, which is a number that each parcel has as identification. That would help us for, for indexing instructions and for finding property.
And it helps the collector and assessor as well.
Yeah.
Okay, you need a motion?
Need a motion for that, if that's a cap someone.
Moved by Mr. Middleton, seconded by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion?
Look, Mr. President.
Yes.
I don't even know if this have anything to do with that, but I don't have a problem with it. I have a problem with when these properties change hands, but it stay in the person that they bought it from name. Where do you fix that at?
That's where, um, and then names escaping me of the company, anyway, they have, Tri-State, um, Tri-State is supposed to be, they have access to our deed records, they're the ones that are supposed to go in there and research the deeds and go ahead and make those changes within the AS four hundred, they're on contract with the tax assessor's office. I'm not sure where they are date-wise or what have you, but that's something we can, can inquire about, yeah.
And what you have to say, those tax records, and this never changes, it's always been the case, tax records you cannot rely on for ownership purposes, just simply cannot. It takes several hours worth of work for somebody to give an opinion as to who owns a piece of property. It just, that's never been not the case, so to speak. But you're right, the, the timetable of, of our tax records, I feel like should, should improve, should be quicker than what's going on.
Mr. President, I agree with everything you say.
I would disagree with you.
But it shouldn't take ten years.
I agree.
I, I think, I think they got it down the line, so I've been selling a lot of property lately and it's, it's changed really so much faster than it used to.
Good.
All right, do you have anything else? Or, or were you in discussion on that? Will you carry the motion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carried.
And this attorney general's office has done several things that have been different than previous attorney generals and so forth. One of those things was about the incarceration costs of pre indictment, uh, but post bound over. Um, it's also always been a longstanding tradition that the county has to supply indigent defenders in municipal court for felony preliminary hearings. Uh, I would like to, since they've opened up and kind of changed their opinion on a longstanding tradition about paying that cost, I'd like to ask them to see if that's still the case, that we need to pay for indigent defenders in municipal court for, for preliminary hearing indictments, if that's okay with the board.
So move, go ahead.
Need a motion for that.
So.
Moved by Mr. Gray, seconded by Mr. Gaines.
I would ask an attorney general's opinion if that's the case, because if it really was just the staff, I feel like they just chose one way and maybe they'll look at it and say, you.
All in favor? Ms. Gaines, motion carried.
I think that is for me.
Okay, Ms. Washington.
Um, I have a request, um, the traffic certificate from Jackson, um, they came in, they had wanted to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Adams County Board of Supervisors, they provided a generic one. Um, but it is, some of it is going to be handled in a new pledge request. But, um, as far as entering into an agreement and coming up with an actual, um, working one, um, I would, I just wanted to submit what they gave you, gave me so that you all be aware of it and Scott could get with, um, Ms. Melissa so they can finalize it.
I need to ask them what exactly, because this is just a form that is sent across the state and it doesn't have any, all the links are empty, so.
I just wanted to.
Yeah, that was pretty wide open, I looked at it a minute ago.
And she says she just, um, uses a generic document and, and use it to tweak it.
So we're going to worry about it later.
Well, we can't take any actions.
Yeah, okay. Three day, okay.
Um, I just wanted to submit the latest certification from the Adams, next to Adams School District. Um, they gave it to me last weekend, I just wanted to put it on the minutes.
We need a motion to interrupt.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Gray. Seconded by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carried. Any names? Motion carried.
And lastly, I have emailed the twenty twenty-five proposals. You see your emails? Just uh in putting the budget request on the department heads. Um I'm still working on it, but we do have to spread it across the minutes towards the August meetings.
So move, second.
Moved by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor?
Mr. President, I owe you stuff. I, I, you did implement them cuts in there, didn't you?
I had some recommendations that I have to deal with the board um in detail. My recommendation.
Yeah, it's just the, what we have left and recommended or requested, but you're not recommended yet.
Yeah, just proposed.
All in favor? Any names? Motion carried. Is that all?
Thank you.
Board may wanna give direction as to budget meetings that we're gonna set up and so forth. This is, she's news it is. You know, I know the road department and the sheriff's office are virtually always done, as are appropriations are usually the first one we do. But anyone else that you wanna set up a budget meeting for when you need the board's direction as to how to, how to go on something?
All right. The winner? Go ahead.
Kind of support you, do your, you asked me about the grads behind the ditch. Had got a request since May, we cut it in May graduation. Plus I have not got a school bus turnaround for this fiscal year.
You haven't got a request by the grads?
I got it in May for graduation, we cut it. You know, I haven't sent it in.
So they need to request it again?
And I did not have a school bus turnaround for this year.
I don't know about no school bus.
I saw somebody.
I know, but I'm just saying I gotta get it every year. I know for long, somebody be getting calls and we hadn't received it, so I mean. Y'all want me to reach out to the, who, somebody had sent one or I mean.
Yeah.
You know, they don't ever send one till we really reach out to them, but it's, they should send us one every year. We can't legally do it.
Okay, go ahead.
That's how I was gonna tell them, do reach out because some of the fire hogs I'm dealing with is all of us turning around. And all that does is keep us legal when the school bus go, so if they don't go ahead and reach out for them.
Yeah, it's a question. Robert, who normally reach out? Do you reach out to them or they reach out to you?
They, you, but lately, no, I've been reaching out.
You know they got new people.
Yeah. Last, I mean, we went through it last year. I reached out to them last year, but I'll bet some way reach out to them.
When you call the school board or the bus turnaround person, can you um tell them to put it on their letterhead?
Yeah, we need a list of the roads on their letterhead.
I um sent him repeated emails last year and I never got a response ever.
They don't do it, but.
Okay.
I give up.
You're the one.
Thank you. All right, I've got a uh Mississippi Department of Authority, Community Services Division, Economic Development job report. I have something out. Well, this is um to prove that Jones, or shows us that uh Jones lumbered through the dip grant and what have you. They uh, they had fifty jobs when they started this. They were supposed to commit thirty-five more jobs. And the department being eighty-five, they actually have eighty-eight employees now. And uh I need to get a motion to spread this across the minutes. Moved by Ms. Middleton, second by Ms. Hutchins. Uh any discussion? All in favor? Okay, I've got a uh, DeZale Davis Constable is uh going to a meeting in uh Gatlinburg. And I've got all this paperwork here. I need an approval. Moved by Mr. Gaines, second by Mrs. Hutchins. Uh any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carried. You'll be able to clean this out for me. This is way back. This is anything we need to worry about. I agree, uh Mr. Gray, that we do work well together. We have our differences sometimes, but uh I don't think y'all owe me drugs. I don't need it. It's just, it's just part of this job. We all represent different segments of the county, but we represent the county as a whole. Somebody calls me and says, oh, I live so and so, I'm not sure, so just tell me what's wrong. Cause you know, I either call Robbie or I go check it out myself, whatever needs to be done. And I've enjoyed working with y'all. Um and uh I wanna give a, a shout out to our Olympic team.
Hey, Olympic team.
Uh they have, they are really, I mean, this has been one of the best years uh, you know, if we could do that good in, in, in winter games, we'd be all right. But we, they really done very, very well. And, 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 and listening to some of those stories, it, it, it doesn't give you chills or, or, or almost makes you wanna cry, some of those athletes and what they've suffered through uh to get where they're at. And uh it, it's, it's pretty amazing, so uh that concludes my report.
Mr. President, I guess can, mention about the Olympics.
See, I took, see, I took your words.
The drug court deal. You took my words, but I was gonna say, man, if, if I was an anchor, anchor in that relay, I think I could have pulled it. For the men, man, I hated that.
Uh Drug Court uh graduation um. I did not open mine yet, but. Graduation will be held on Monday, August the nineteenth at two o'clock at Gayosa, the event center on Gayosa. These uh two judges, uh Carmen Drake and Deborah Blacko, really serious about this drug court. Uh like we haven't seen in a long time. They're, they're trying to get these people to get through it. I mean, the more people we get off drugs, the better off this whole community is. Um it's a, it's a tough task. It's hard for those people. I know my, my daughter graduated that five years ago. She's still clean. My wife picked up her thirty-fifth year chip uh a couple of months ago. But it's so uncommon for, for them to last. They, one of the things, they gotta have God in their lives and they gotta wanna do it. There's so many people that get sent off to different places and if they're not ready, that they're not, they're, they're not gonna do it. It, it, it has to be their decision. I, I know a lot of success stories, but I know a lot of failures too. I've been witness to them, cause a lot of people, boy, are drug addicts or have been. And it's just, it's tough. It, it breaks your heart sometimes, cause you think they're on the right track. It takes one little thing to throw them off and so I support this a hundred percent uh on this uh graduation.
Mr. President, before we close out, uh I forgot to mention uh to the attorney. I, I text you about the uh Public Service Commission in Gray River. I think it's time enough, time now, we need to reach back out to them, cause I'm getting caught with people saying they water barrels are increasing again over in that area, so uh I won't, I mean, we have a new Public Service Commissioner, right? Yeah, and, and he should feel some kind of obligation to come down here to introduce himself or do something, man. I don't even know who he is. I be talking to commissioners out of other areas and don't even know uh who represent us in this area. So could you retalk to uh Public Service Commission and, and some, a representative from Gray River?
Yeah, I'm gonna reach out to the Nash's Water Works as well, cause I know they're.
Yeah, they.
I wanna give them more information, more of what's really going on with that deeper situation, cause it really are a middleman type of.
Right, we gotta find a way to cut the middleman out, because uh those people out there suffer with that, with that kind of increase in their water bill. And uh I just wanna piggyback on what uh President, I mean, President Wilson said about this drug problem that we have in our community. And it's a good thing uh what the two judges are doing, they're taking to another level. Drug problem, mental health problem, and, and, and homeless problem. Man, you got people, I, I can't even go to the dollar store now. You got people sleeping in the parking lot at the dollar store. We got some serious problems in our community, y'all. And I mean, me personally, I think we need to get a committee together to try to address at least the mental health in a homeless problem, cause I don't know what we can do about the drug problem, like Supervisor Wilson say. If, if that person, I got friends and he know what I'm talking about. Been, been to rehab. I'm sixty-four, been going to the rehab for forty years, but that ain't what he wanna do. Cause he tells me, I'm doing what I wanna do. And tell that individual, say, I don't wanna do this no more and pray about that situation, you never gonna kick that habit. That individual got to have it in himself and say, I, I'm tired of this. You can't do it for your kid, your mama, your who else. You gotta do it for yourself. Self-love is, is, is number one. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, and the follow, follow up on that, if anybody that's going to do that, they just can't just quit and not have, go to meetings. Like whether it's AA or Celebrate Recovery, they have it at first fastest uh in, in the medallion. I go over there, my wife asked me to go with her, and, and family support is so important to it. And but, but having that core group around you, people that have been through what you've been through and, 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 and know all about it. If, if you don't have somebody telling their story up there, which is what is great about Celebrate Recovery. Is they usually have somebody that comes in, whether it's from around here or whatever, and gives their testimony about their story and how far down they went. As a matter of fact, uh we've got a guy that uh we're gonna try to get to Nash's and I wanna talk to y'all about maybe getting this guy to speak in front the Nash's school system, like junior high, high school at the same time. His name is uh Tony Hoffman. He was uh the best BMX rider in the world and back in eighties. And uh six months before the Olympics, he decides to bring a talking and smoke a joint. And his viral for the next fifteen years landed him in prison. And he rehabbed, he, he finally got the lower end of his life and he rehabbed and he has since trained uh Olympians. So his, his story is a great story, but he went as far down the tube as you can go and not die. From sleeping on the streets, parents kicked him out completely, but, but so we're gonna bring that guy to, to Adams County sometime in the next two or three months. And uh get him to speak at maybe AC Cathedral, maybe Nash, Nash's High too. Because he, his story, you look him up, it, it's an incredible story to watch what he's gone through and, and come back. That's what it takes, is, is people saying, I've been there. You're not gonna listen to me, cause I never did it. But, but you listen to somebody that went to the bottom and has climbed this all the way back up to the top. But that concludes my report. Thank y'all. Uh I think we need a motion for closing term. Moved by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Gaines. Thank y'all.